The meeting to order. Tonight is June 14th. This is the Board of Selectmen meeting. And we are recording this on Whitman Hansen Cable Access Television for those who want the viewing pleasure of being able to see that at home. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. And with that, Mrs. Ryan, may I look to you for public announcements and then we'll move into our new business.
The town hall, whoop, am I close enough? The town hall will be closed on Monday, June 20th, and observant of the Juneteenth holiday. We are looking for citizens at large to become members of the newly revitalized Bylaw Review Committee. We also need volunteers to fill vacancies on our Capital Improvement Committee and the Parks and Fields Commission. Please contact the Select Board office for information on volunteer opportunities. Volunteer applications may be found on the town website, www.hansen-mass.gov, or by calling the Selectmen's office at 781-293-2131. Upcoming meetings, Board of Selectmen, June 21st, 2022, and Board of Selectmen, June 28th, 2022.
Thank you, Mrs. Ryan. With that, we've got Representative Cutler here, and we have Selectmen Kenneth Mitchell and Matt Dyer. And, yes, please come up, Representative Cutler. And I will turn it over to you for the festivities.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for giving us a forum here this evening. I want to, and I want to thank and welcome our new members of the Board of Selectmen. We had a chance to march together in the parade, but I welcome your service to the town and look forward to continuing our work together. So congratulations. Thank you. I'm just here to help recognize, I think anytime someone dedicates their time and service to the community, it's worthy of recognition. And I apologize, I wasn't able to come to the final meeting of the old board. I wanted to come here and have a chance to publicly thank our two outgoing Select Board members for all their years of service to the town. I know from personal experience before serving in my role as a state representative, I was on the Select Board as well. I know it's challenging work, it's enjoyable work, sometimes it's frustrating work, but it's important work, and the work that you do is important. And I know, like, we have a lot of folks here, obviously some important stuff on your agenda, and I appreciate the folks who have given us a chance to do this, but I wanted to say thank you. So I have a citation here from Senator Brady and myself to recognize Mr. Mitchell and Mr. Dyer for their service to the Board of Selectmen here in Hanson. So if you will indulge me, I would like to read this and slightly embarrass you two gentlemen for all of your great work. I know, you know, one of the nice things about this work is, you know, you put aside your partisan differences, and you come in the door and you work together for the betterment of the town. And I know all of you did that. I've done that for years. I've enjoyed our ability to work together and advance the town in many different ways. I'm grateful to you for your service and look forward to whatever the next steps will be along the way. So I have a citation here that, I will read them. Bear with me. So it's the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, House of Representatives. Be it hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to Matthew Dyer and Kenneth Mitchell in recognition of your years of dedicated service and leadership to the town of Hanson as a valued member of the Select Board. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses a hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors. And it's given this day of June 2022 at the State House, Boston, Massachusetts, signed by Speaker of the House Ronald Mariano and yours truly, State Representative Josh Cutler. So on behalf of the Commonwealth, I want to thank you. This citation has been read into the record and now be a permanent part of the record of the House of Representatives. And with that, I would like to both thank and hope that folks here will join me in a round of applause for all of your services.
Thank you, Josh. Yes, yes, we are. Thank you. And normally I would have said, please, do you have any words that you'd like to say? But we have a jam-packed agenda tonight, so we don't have time for that. So, anyway, okay, next up, we've got, I'm going to take a few things out of order because I've got a couple of people who have got commitments, and I want to, and they're very quick. So we'll, the next up, we'll have incident at Camp Kwanee rental refund fee. Mr. Malisi, where are, oh, okay. If you don't mind coming up to the mic and introducing who you are, and if you could lay up why we're discussing this.
Sure. So my name's Frank Malisi. I'm the, I'm a Recreation Committee member. First off, let me just say, I have not had a chance to meet Mrs. Ryan or Mr. Hill, but congratulations on the Select Board appointments. So we had an incident at the camp two weekends ago where there was a wedding, and unfortunately the mother of the bride had a medical incident on the floor of the camp. And she was brought to the hospital and later passed away due to an aneurysm. So there's a couple of different things that we wanted to do. Number one, the rental was supposed to be using the bridal cottage and the pavilion for brunch the next day. They did not get to do that, obviously. They did not get full use out of the facility at the camp. I believe that happened around eight o'clock, and they had the rental, I believe, until 11:00. Don't quote me on that, 10:00 or 11:00. So we are going to be discussing tonight at the Recreation Committee a refund. I would like to see it at $2,500. The total rental fee was around $5,500. We technically don't need to, because we didn't do anything other than the bridal cottage or the pavilion, but in a situation where it's supposed to be somebody's happiest day of their life and something like that happened, we wanted to make it a little bit easier with the unexpected costs that they're going to have to face. The people are not Hanson residents, but I don't think that really matters. You know, so we would like to approve a refund of a set amount that we're going to be discussing tonight at the Recreation Meeting at 6:30. So I wanted to give everybody here a heads up and answer any questions that they have.
Appreciate that, and appreciate you keeping the board up to date on that. Did anybody on the board have any questions? Did, I think it would be best, why don't we entertain a motion tonight so that you can go to your meeting and be empowered to know what we're willing to support?
Thank you.
Did anybody want to entertain a motion?
Sumo.
Can we clarify the, for the amount that Frank?
Twenty-five hundred?
So, that is what I would, I would, I would like to see at the Commission meeting. I can't say that that's going to be the exact amount, but I think that's what the general consensus would be between me and the Vice Chair and Dory as well, after we discussed the budget and everything like that. We obviously hadn't discussed it in a quorum. So I would, I would like the motion to kind of be a little open-ended, just to maybe approve the refund that we approved at the camp.
Well, we can't do that. We do need to be specific, but we could say an amount not to exceed, and it could be for the total refund, if that's what you're.
Yeah, that would be, so if you guys want to approve the total refund, and then we will obviously, we'll make the decision tonight, but I don't believe the total refund will be refunded.
Right. Mr. Hickey, did you want to?
Sure. So I'll make the motion that the Recreation Commission refund up to $2,500.
If you can make it up to $5,000, that'd be great, because that is the total amount of the registration, but we'll, we'll, I don't.
Five thousand dollars.
Five thousand dollars, please. Yes, thank you.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And one last thing, I just wanted to, we discussed Margaret Cameron Hickey's swim class that she had. She's making some changes to that, so I would like to just give this information to all of you. At the next meeting, I'll ask you to put on the agenda to discuss these changes that she's making and doing just simply swim instructions at the Cove. And I'll be happy to answer any questions. My email's on the top of this for you guys.
Okay. Thanks. Fine. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Malisi. We appreciate it, and keep us in the loop on how things progress tonight.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. And one other thing that we wanted to take out of order was the appointment of Don Howard to the Drainage Committee. Mr. Howard, as you know, has got extensive experience in all aspects of, I mean, there really isn't a board, he hasn't been on Conservation, Water, I mean, and we always have openings on the Drainage Committee. So I will entertain a motion to appoint Don Howard to the Drainage Committee.
Sumo. Second.
Okay. All in favor? Okay. All right. Where are you, Mr. Howard?
He's back there.
Oh, all right. Congratulations, Mr. Howard.
Very much.
Well, we thank you for stepping up, as per usual. All right. Thank you, Mr. Howard. All right. And next on the agenda is the open public hearing. I hereby open the public hearing for the taking of that certain parcel of land with the buildings thereon, if any, totaling approximately 13.1 acres, having a street address of zero, Maquon Street, there's a typo in that, there's no R. Maquon Street, Hanson, Massachusetts, and being Lot 2 on Town of Hanson Assessors Map 60, commonly known as the Sleeper Property for recreational open space use as deemed necessary for the health and welfare of the inhabitants of Hanson as authorized by Article 4 of the special town meeting of May 2, 2022. Said notice having been sent by this board on May 10, 2022, to the following owners of record. Myron O. Sleeper, 129 Emery Road, Marshfield, Massachusetts. Johanna Bickford, 65 Lizelle Street, Hangham, Massachusetts. Johanna Bickford, trustee Sleeper Family Trust, 65 Lizelle Street, Hangham, Massachusetts. I know I'm not going to pronounce this correctly, but I'll give it a try. Solon F. Simpson, 155 South Pacific Drive, Vinton, Virginia. Burdel Kingen, 9208 Beverly Overland Park, Shawnee Mission, Kansas. Roscoe M. Shea, 4,008 West 91st Street, Prairie Village, Kansas. Estate of Edward Larry, aka Edward O'Larry, docket number 99707, care of Plymouth County Probate and Family Court, 52 Oberry Street, Plymouth, Massachusetts. Said notices were reissued on May 18, 2022, to those same owners of record, as well as the following owners of record. Del Kingen, 198 Needle Rush Drive, Santa Rosa Beach, Califor, I'm sorry, Florida. Roscoe M. Shea, 4,008 West 91st Street, Prairie Village, Kansas. All those speaking in favor? All those speaking against? Discussion? Kate, help me out here, if, you know, because this is the first time we've been doing a hearing.
Yeah, sure.
On this, this is a taking. But, but can I, may I just?
This is just part of the public process of engaging in a taking. This is in fact friendly taken, taking. We've been negotiating with the property owner for quite some time.
Yes.
We reissued a warrant article at this past town meeting to authorize the town to engage in this process, and the reason for that was there were title issues, and they're historic issues. So the property, instead of being passed down through the record, through the chain of title as recorded in the Registry of Deeds, wasn't done. So what happens is, your property goes into probate when you die, right? So then the heirs are involved. So there's a cloud on title. So the way to clear title is to engage in this process. We notified all the record owners. We haven't received word that anyone objects, and in fact, the component of this, Mr. Sleeper, has been, you know, intimately involved in this process and supports this process, because it allows us to close this deal prior to the expiration of this fiscal year and get reimbursed for both of the funds through a land grant issued by the Commonwealth.
Okay, great. So did anybody have any questions? I know we've been over this ad infinitum several times, but, okay. Anybody out there have any questions? Okay. So with that, I will close the public hearing, and I move that pursuant to the authority granted by General Law Chapter 4014, the Board of Selectmen hereby take by eminent domain as approved by Article 4 of the special town meeting of May 2, 2022, that certain parcel of land with the buildings thereon, if any, totaling approximately 13.1 acres, having a street address of zero, Maquon Street, Hanson, Mass., and being Lot 2 on Town Hanson Assessors Map 60, commonly known as the Sleeper Property. This taking is for the purpose of recreational open space use as deemed necessary for the health and welfare of the inhabitants of Hanson, and that there be an award of $2,003,296 for this taking in accordance with the appraisal dated May 16, 2019, by Appraisal Company of New England.
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Are we good to go, Kate?
That's fantastic. And Lisa has a document for you to sign, so no one need building, you can sign that document, because we'll get it recorded, and then we'll notify the owners via certified mail that this action was taken.
Okay, great. That's, that's a big load to be able to get that grant, purchase that. All right. Now we are moving on to 252 Lakeside Drive. So, at this point in our agenda, we're going to move to discussing Lakeside Road. Recently, a fence was placed across the road such that road, the coaster road can no longer be accessed. It's important to note that this is a private way, which means it is not a public way, and therefore not technically owned by the Town of Hanson or the responsibility of the Town of Hanson. The Town of Hanson does grade Lakeside and plow Lakeside as approved by town meeting vote every year. As a preliminary matter, this board is not a land use board, so I just want to, we're not planning, we're not ZBA. We're also not a land court, so we can't make land court decisions. We're quite limited to what we can do, however, and before we actually got the citizens petition, I thought it would be good for people to be able to voice their concerns about what's going on there. And what we can commit to as a board is, after we have this conversation, we can work with legal counsel and with planning, and we can see if there is a path forward that we might be able to get some positive traction. And we have to be careful about what we say in a public session as elected officials, because what we do not want is, in our zeal to help you folks out, that we unwittingly become a party to a legal lawsuit that is going to cost the town a lot of money. So I want, I want you to appreciate that we want to hear what you've got to say. I understand there's concerns. I drove down there myself. I completely appreciated. I drove that down last Thursday night just to, I have to visualize things for myself, and I couldn't quite wrap my mind around what was going on. And so I, I know how I would feel. And so before we start, just a couple of ground rules, because we do have a lot of people, and I don't know everybody. If you don't mind stepping up to the mic, giving your name, telling me where you are, be respectful, no name-calling. If at all possible, try not to mention the particular landowners' names. We're going to just try to talk about the property. And, and to the extent somebody's already said something, just can we not necessarily, like, repeat, just for the sake of, you know, of keeping things moving along? So just basic ground rules. Let's be respectful. We're here, we respect you guys, we want to hear what you've got to say, and then we'll take it back and we'll see what we can do with it. Did anybody want to say anything else? Okay. Kate, did you want to say anything?
I'll, here to answer questions, so.
Yeah, we did, we did ask town council to kind of stick around in case anything gets funky and we might need, you know, legal counsel to answer. So with that, I'll, I'll open up the floor. Mr. Cushing, well, I mean, I've obviously just said who you are, but if you don't mind getting up and saying who you are.
William Cushing, 236 Lakeside Road. So I grew up down in this area as a young child, you know, in my early 40s, and I could tell you that prior to, you know, when I grew up there, this, these are right-of-ways have always been the way they currently are. You know, certain individuals on Lakeside and Rollercoaster have certain agendas, but what I did want to bring up was, I think the primary intent is access to Old Ham Pond, and by creating a road closure at Lakeside and Rollercoaster, it allows them a dead end with, if you look at the handout that I gave you, you will see a right-of-way easement down to Old Ham Pond. So to me, it's a double-edged sword. What they're saying is essentially by closing the road is, is that they would like to block Rollercoaster Road. It's, it's our private property, even though it's been traveled on since prior to 1957, which, when zoning was enacted in the Town of Hanson, that road has been the way it's been. We could argue it's a right-of-way. I could also tell you that it's a prescriptive easement based on there is electric, there is water, there is gas. I'm not sure when, you know, when they put those in, if there was ever consent or needed consent, because there was right-of-ways granted to those areas. I would also say that, that if you didn't want to call it a right-of-way, I can say, we have a number of situations like this in Hanson, and most recently, I just want to kind of segue into a situation that I experienced as a ZBA member. So full disclosure, I am on the Zoning Board of Appeals. I think it was about a year and a half ago, I dealt with a resident of 45 Ocean Ave, who wasn't the same situation, but it was a very similar situ, similar situation in nature. There was Ocean Ave, I don't know who's familiar with it, but it was a street off Mount Pontet, and there were paper streets going, there was a paper street going to Mount Pontet Pond. The street never actually existed on the ground, but it was there in paper in a nature. And there were people in the area that had a right to cross over that right-of-way. So at that time, the, the resident came into the ZBA and said, well, we own the property, we pay taxes on the property, we own till half the road. We would like to put a fence up in the middle of that road. Now, at that time, they came in front of the ZBA, which, and I think originally they came in front of Mr. Curran, who was the building inspector at the time, and he said, he disagreed, so he did not grant the permit, and then he sent them in front of the ZBA. At that time, you know, we looked at the application. I don't recall, I think we got town council's opinion. And again, we did not allow them to put a fence in the middle of the right-of-way. The reason why we did not is because people have a right to access that. You can't obstruct it. It is your property, you do pay taxes on it, as well as everybody on Lakeside and Rollercoaster Road, they all own the private way. Some people own on both sides. At my residence, we own on both sides. This is the equivalent of saying that I can put a gate up and allow who I want to pass and when I want to pass. So when you, I know you guys didn't make a formal decision on this, I know that you just chose not to enforce it. And I understand why you don't enforce private property issues. I completely agree. But those private property issues are typical to fences and, and, you know, you know, drive, you know, these aren't right-of-way issues that we're talking about here. Now, this has been a right of travel for many years. We could get into, and I'm sure the residents would probably get into, and there's a number of them here today, into emergency and safety issues that they have seen since the road closure in the past few weeks, not to mention experiences that they dealt with, with not a second means of egress.
May I just interrupt you for one second there?
I'm sorry.
I just want to pin, pin in the safety issues.
Yes.
Because I want to assure you, if our fire chief and our police chief had told this board
Yep.
that they believed that this posed a safety risk, and I had fully expected that that's what we would hear back,
Mm-hmm.
then the decision we reached probably would have been different than what we reached.
Understood.
However, we were told unequivocally that neither of our, our first responder chiefs, so neither the fire nor police, had any concerns about safety as a result of this fence being erected. So I meant to say that in my opening comments, and I skipped over it, but I just want to let you know that, because the decision would have been different.
Understood. So I would go on to say, you know, in that situation, the zoning enforcement officer enforced that. It wasn't a selectman, it wasn't to come in front of the selectman and looking for an order, whether you're going to have the police enforce it or not. It, it wasn't that way. It's the zoning enforcement's officer's job, who in this town currently is Kerry Glass. It's his job to enforce this. It is not the police department's job. Now, we can find him. He puts it up, the police don't have to go down there. You know what? It happens in every town. You want to do something, you get fined by the zoning enforcement officer, and you get fined $300 a day until you remove it. And until your fines get so much, and there's a lien put in your house, then maybe you'll move it. You don't have to have the police necessarily enforce it, but you can enforce it punitive, in my opinion. You know, you know, Lakeside Road from end to end is almost .8 of a mile. We know a mile is 5,280, 5,280 feet. Mr. Weeks, you were on the planning board. You could agree that you have a dead-end requirement on new, on new construction, and you could tell the, the Select Board what that is. It's 1,200 feet, am I correct?
Five years ago.
Okay, but Mr. Weeks, I just want to caution, we're not the planning board.
I know, but.
And Joe is not on the planning board any longer.
I understand.
And so I started off by saying, where I think this is going to end up going, and it's obviously up to the rest of the board, is it likely will be a combination of planning and our zoning enforcement officer,
Yes.
Mr. Glass, who will need to look at this more comprehensively in cooperation and collaboration with our legal counsel.
I apologize for having, but, you know, I
That's okay.
I told Mr. Weeks on the planning board, and I know he's very knowledgeable, and he was the chairman, and that's why I asked.
No, your point, his point's very valid.
Okay. So there's a 1,200 dead-end street requirement. In other words, if you put a new subdivision in the Town of Hanson, they want a second means of egress any more than 1,200 feet. So, and now if it's more than 1,200 feet, and you don't have a second means of egress, you either need a waiver, which they rarely grant, or you need a second means of egress. I could also tell you on a retreat law, which is for one single family house, you also need anything more, the fire, this is a fire department regulation, by the way. You need an apparatus turnaround. So a fire truck at more than 350 feet on a retreat lot, now, not, not to mention, I'm not wanting your residents to own Lakeside Road and Roll, and Lakeside Road, but I could imagine there's probably more than 25 to 30. But on a retreat lot for one single person, you need, these days, you know, you know, based on our rules and regulations on an endorsement, from Mayan, our endorsement, I think, you, and it's also a fire department regulation, you need a turnaround, anything more than 350 feet. So to say that, at a, something that's, for miles, 5,280 feet, .8 is approximately 4,000, to say that there doesn't need to be some turning radius there, or, so you're saying that now the fire department and police department can go on private property and turn around, but they can't go on 252 Lakeside Road and cross over that?
Yep.
I would completely disagree. I can go on and on for days, but I would like these residents to voice their concerns. And I only, I gave you guys a copy of, you know, the right-of-ways, and this is a plan of land from 1957. And as you can see, Lot A is 252 Lakeside Road. Lot D, I'm not sure of the address, but that is his neighbor across your street, I'm not going to mention his name.
Thank you.
And Lot B and C, C, most recently, passed away. Her son was handling the estate, and I, he died in a car accident during the probationary, while, while the estate was being probated. So 252 Lakeside Road decided that he would start clearing his right-of-way down to the lake in the interim after the first person died, then got stopped by the police, and then continued after the second person died, and then got stopped by the police. So it's clear what the intent is here, in my opinion. And I would say that, no, the town does not, should not enforce private property issues, but I would clearly say that this is not a private property issue per se. This is a private property issue with a right-of-way access, and even if you didn't call it that, which it is, because we would have to pull every single deed on Rollercoaster Road and Lakeside Road, and I've pulled his deed at 252 Lakeside, and I can see, one, two, there's three people that have access to that right-of-way that live on Lakeside. So if they live on Lakeside, and that's Rollercoaster, then they have access to cross that, which means you can't shut it down. But if you didn't want to call it that, it's a prescriptive easement, which means anything more than 20 years, if something's been used as a right-of-way, there's, you know, it's been graded, and it's been plowed, and, 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 you know, there's, you know, there's electric, there's gas, and there's, you know, all the utilities on it. I would call it a prescriptive easement. I'm not asking the town to waste their resources, but what I am asking is, you don't have to be a police chief, and you don't have to be a fire chief, to realize the safety and emergency issues here. And I'm not knocking them, I'm just saying, maybe they're busy, and maybe they didn't have an opportunity to answer you guys properly, but I would clearly say, you don't have to be a police chief or a fire chief to realize the safety and emergency issues here. And I'm sure the residents can talk about the rest. Any questions?
Billy, before you go, you would mention, and it's pretty clear about the safety issue, but
Yes.
my question coming into this tonight was, how would a fire truck turn around? More importantly, the highway trucks, if they're plowing, where do they plow? Where does the snow go?
Mr. Hickey, I will say, Mr. Sh, Mr., I, so we, we reached out initially in the
And I'm sure the residents can talk about the rest. Any questions?
Yeah, Billy, before you go, you would mention, and it's pretty clear about the safety issue.
Yes.
But my question coming into this tonight was how would a fire truck turn around? Uh, more importantly, um, the, the highway trucks, if they're plowing, where do they plow? Where does the snow go?
Mr. Hickey, I will say, Mr. Sh- Mr., I, so we, we reached out initially, and then we reached out a second time. And in the second time, we made sure to ask Mr. Shav. He did have serious concerns
Yes.
as highway, um, in terms of grading and snow plowing and, and, and all of that. He really had concerns about ability, well, you know, you drove a truck for a living, so I mean, yeah.
When I went down there, there was no way I would be able to turn my trash truck around. And you're absolutely right that even with my pickup truck, I had to turn around on private property.
You did, yeah.
Two thirty-two Rollercoaster Road. Only because I know those people and they're friends of mine.
Oh.
You know, so I mean, in full disclosure, I know a lot of people in that area.
Yeah.
But my concern was, and I went down, the fence wasn't up yet, but the trash was already collected, um, from private carriers. How would those trucks? It can't be done with the trash truck, I can tell you that.
They're backing down the street.
Backing down the street, which to me is a safety issue in and of itself.
And that's a, and that's a huge safety issue, because who's going to take the liability when a trash truck backs up? And you know your, your cl- you know, what you can see and what you can't see in your blind spots from being, you know, running a truck. You, God forbid, somebody runs over a kid. Is the select going to take responsibility and say, hey, we allowed this street closure because Mr. Olson needed an extra I'm sorry, two fifty-two Lakeside Road needed an extra five feet by twenty feet of land and so, you know, get them zander. And that is
Okay, you didn't have to go so far as saying a kid, but let's just say the wires.
Adults.
The wires have to be thirteen point, uh,
Oh, yeah.
feet off the ground, because my truck was twelve, uh, feet, eight inches high. So if the wires are hanging anywhere, there's definitely going to be an inconvenience just from any kind of truck.
Good point.
Not just a trash, any kind of truck at all. And it is up to the, um, cable company, telephone companies, whoever got the wires up there, to make sure they're that high. But you don't see that until after the fact.
It's taken down.
Yes, that, and then you could, well, it's happened to me, where I've seen the wires dangling at probably ten or eleven feet.
Yeah.
So I avoid them, but you, you know, you're always looking out for that rolling ball, low wires
Yeah.
tri- because of a tree branch, you know, you happen to take it down and it hits a car, who's liable for that?
Yes.
You know, so there's, yeah, it's not just safety.
Yeah.
You know, police and fire, it's how are they going to turn around? How's the trash truck? You know, where does the snow go?
And, 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 and I would, I would add that it's going to be snow removal, it's not going to be snow plowing, which the town's going to add, have an added expense there. Now, what are you going to do? You're going to plow it on the private property? No, you're going to have snow removal now. You're gonna, you're gonna have a bar, a, a front end loader, you're gonna load it into a machine. So how much more is it going to cost the town in perpetuity if you would allow that? You know what I mean? So when you, when you talk about not getting involved in private issues, I get it. But I can tell you that the plowing within itself is going to be far more for snow removal than it is for snow plowing.
That, that is what, that is what Mr. Shav said. He said, he really didn't believe, and I, and this is not my area of expertise, but he believed plowing would be difficult. It would be a bunch of removal. They'd just have to remove.
Yes.
Which sounds more expensive, more cumbersome, and you know.
In perpetuity.
Yeah.
Uh, Ms. Chair, so you know, so.
Yep.
And Billy, not that I want to prolong me and you, because I'm sure there's other people that want to speak, including board members.
Yes.
But to remove the snow, where's the first truck go so the second truck can come in?
Oh, I, I don't know, I don't know the logistics, I really don't, but it would be a, it'd be a, it'd be a pain. And God forbid, you have a storm, I would add, with an emergency situation and a street down, what do you do? And, and, and the, and the, and, you know, the second means of egress is so important. Forget about all the other, there's so many legal iss- there's a legal issues here, there's zoning issues, there's emergency issues, there's safety issues. There's public iss- you get them zander, there's so many issues, but I would say this. You know, sometimes a minute or two means a difference between life or death. And you never know, a- and people probably can attest to those experiences that live down there. Um, and, and they've had that street, and I've had that street blocked off when I've been there. If I didn't, couldn't get out through Rollercoaster Road, I would have been stuck. But I'll end there. Thank you for your time, um, board, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Um, did anybody else want to, um, if, just state your name and your address, that would be marvelous.
Good evening, members, excuse me, good evening, members of the board. My name is Nick Robino. I'm here with my wife, Michelle. We own two seventy-nine Lakeside Road. Uh, thank you very much for hearing us this evening. We've only been here five years, and we love the property, we love the town. I support everything Billy said about easements and prescriptive easements. I was concerned myself, having an engineering background, a dirt road, it's not public, publicly owned and so forth. So I did a little research my, on my own before I purchased, and I agree with everything that he's putting forward. So I don't want to go through that again. I wanted to talk a little more about safety. I certainly respect the police and fire, and I thank them for everything they're doing. We live on Lakeside, so we're, if they respond down Rollercoaster, they can't get to our property. And they know it's closed, so they're going to go around.
Right.
It's definitely a longer route. I didn't measure it, I don't know if it's a mile, whatever, but it's longer to get from the fire station in the center of town here to my house is definitely going to be a longer response time, because that's closed. We had a delivery problem. Now, I know it's a private delivery, but they came down Rollercoaster, they couldn't get anywhere, they canceled the order. Went on to the next one, we had to make a thousand phone calls. Luckily, it was not medicine. We do have medicine that comes through the mail that gets delivered, that, you know, you do kind of rely on. Trees, trees are coming down a lot, and Rollercoaster has always been a second access forest while we've been there. So I don't want to take too much of your time, but I do, uh, thank you again for s- for having us here this evening. And we are looking for your, for your assistance in trying to resolve this. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, please.
My name is Darlene Chumsey, and I live at two eighty-three Lakeside Road. And I'm handicapped, and sometimes it does matter when the ambulance gets there. I use my nebulizer a lot. But if they came the wrong way, and they know now, but what if a tree limb is down? We lose tree limbs constantly. We have trucks blocking the road a lot so they can trim the trees and try to keep it safe. If I need to go to the hospital and Lakeside is, and Rollercoaster is closed, I'm in big trouble. And I, I just, that is a safety concern to me. Cause that, once my nebulizer didn't work, my epi didn't work, I've got minutes. So I, I fear that road being closed, and I can't run across and say, can you please open it up? So that was my big safety concern. And like, um, Nick said, the deliveries were a problem, I had a gentleman. I had a delivery, because we're trying to make the yard look nice, we bought a big kayak rack to put all the kayaks, so they're just not laying out. The thing weighed two hundred and fifty pounds or better. He carried it from the block, where it was blocked, over to our house and threw it on the deck at seven o'clock in the morning. Now, yeah, thank God he could do it, but somebody else trying to do that, GPS takes you Rollercoaster, and a lot of them don't reroute it. So we either lose deliveries, we could lose a life very easily. And I just, I don't feel safe, and I've been living there over ten years now, and never had an issue feeling safe. Cause ambulants respond while fire is always right there when people call, it's right there. So now that's a concern. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please.
My name's Mary Ellen Buckley, and I live at two thirty-six Lakeside Road. My land, um, we own the house, it, my land goes across the road down to the water. But I know we're even owning that road, it's a right of way. And I realized that people have to drive through there, and I would, you know, that's, to stop someone from driving through there, to me, is absolutely insane. And people should be able to have their right of way. Um, I've seen a lot of things, because I'm home during the day, and, um, we ha- I, well, the dumpster, I think he already mentioned, that goes down backwards down the road. And then when he did, then he had to come back up, he went to the right side of the road to get the trash. Then he had to back all the way down the road, then come back up to go to the left side of the road, and then he had to back down again. And then go around to Cross Street and Crescent to go back to, and he told me it took an extra twenty minutes at least on his route. But when I see FedEx people stop three houses before me and walk down the road with a package to, and it's a dead end down there, to walk down, I mean, the things that we're seeing there, it just, my biggest thing, one thing is, we've had, when there's an emergency situation, I think that's really scary. If there's an emergency, we know that three vehicles are going to come down that road, they're going to have a fire engine, an ambulance, and a utility truck. Now, if they come down that road, say tomorrow, how the heck are they going to back out? When it's an emergency, they need to get out of there very quickly. You know, I've been there forty-five years, and I've never seen anything like this. And I love living there, I love all these people. We have a great neighborhood.
I know you do.
But this is really just, I don't know what else to say, except hopefully this will get resolved.
Well, that, that's our hope, and I am really sorry that you guys are going through all this stuff.
I know you are.
Our hands are a bit, a bit tied, not completely tied, but maybe like one hand a little bit tied, but, uh, but, you know, so we're going to, we're going to keep pushing. I don't want you to give up all hope.
We don't. We trust you.
All right. Thank you for listening to me, I appreciate it. Did anybody else want to chime in?
My name is, uh, Matt LeBlanc. I live one forty Rollercoaster. I have the distinct privilege of lis- living right next to these two.
Well, I apologize, because I, I turned around in your driveway.
Isn't it fun, you know?
I, I bet a lot, I turned, I turned.
Yeah, everybody's turning, yeah. Yeah, my, my driveway and Rick's have kind of turned into the turner. I see people pull up, you know.
You have a great house. I turned around in your driveway.
Yeah, it's fine, I, I don't mind. I was going to put a sign up, I didn't close the roads, please use my driveway. Um, so, yeah, so a lot of, I, I see it as a safety issue mainly, because you got UPS, you got FedEx, you got the trash guys. Um, there's no way if like one of the houses where we are caught on fire and they sent the ladder truck down, like, where's he turning around? I mean, he couldn't even do it in my driveway, and, and I have the longest driveway, you have to back up to the, to the paved lot. So, um, yeah, I see it as a safety issue, it's obviously an inconvenience, it's obviously ridiculous. Also, where that is a right of way, where water lines are going through, there's rebar going through the gate into the road. So I guess you missed the water line.
Oh, okay, that's interesting.
That, yeah, that's something.
I, I didn't know how, I, without getting out and violating all of this, I, I, you know, I had to look afar. But I did not realize that it was permanently affixed. It almost looked somewhat temporary.
Is there also gas lines down there?
I don't know.
There are gas lines. There are water lines, there are gas lines. This guy's, this address is driving rebar down into the ground. I'll bet you he called DigSafe.
No, there's no DigSafe lines.
Okay.
So it's mainly, I would say it's mainly, uh, certainly a safety issue, and there are trees, like I'll echo everything everybody else said. Every time we have a storm, there's a tree down on Lakeside or Rollercoaster, so it's like, I mean, I guess I get out there with my chainsaw, just somebody let me know, but, you know. It's, uh, yeah, it's certainly a safety issue, because with the storms, a tree's down, you can guarantee a tree is down every storm on one of those two roads.
I mean, it's Hanson, but you guys do get it. You get hit even hard for Hanson.
Everybody's got generators now. We lose power, so. So, yeah, that's, that's pretty much it. I mean, everything everybody said, I, I totally agree with, and
All right.
Yeah, it's just, I know you guys' hands are tied, it's a ridiculous situation.
We're not hogtied.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But thank you, guys.
Thank you. Mr. Cushion, I, I, I think we've got somebody who, yes, sir.
I'm, uh, Jeff Gustafson. I live at one thirty-one Rollercoaster Road. I too get the pleasure and the entertainment from two fifty-two and his buddy across the street. I love his dog. He's a great friend of mine when they walk it up the street, but try not to engage in conversation. This past winter, a couple of times, they did block the road.
Oh.
When we had a snowstorm, they insisted that the snowplow driver stop about where the barricade is now. And make a snow pile, so nobody could get through.
Oh.
It was eventually removed, but that was their first attempt to close the road.
Okay.
The next time, uh, well, the snowplows did it, but then they had to back all the way back up Rollercoaster Road. I have watched the, uh, recycling trucks come down to Matt's house and have to back all the way up the road. Very unsafe, and like somebody said, God forbid somebody get hit.
They actually turn around at ninety-five, trash truck.
Okay. Yeah, but again, they have made a couple of tent, uh, this winter, a couple of attempts to close the road. Uh, I know the police came down and there was discussion, and they moved the barricade. My biggest thing is just, it's such a public safety issue. My wife has had to use the ambulance a couple of times this year, and each time they came in through Lakeside so that they could exit on Rollercoaster without having to turn around. Now, you're going to have to put the ambulance in the driveway, you know, and he's going to have to back into the driveway. It's, it slows the response time. You have the other, the fire engine or the police car that comes with them. Every, it just causes so much more of a headache for everybody involved, and that's pretty much it. So it's, it's a huge safety concern for me on all aspects, the trash trucks, the delivery trucks, the, uh, services, snowplow, fire, police, it's just, I, I just think it needs to be, you know, fixed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gustafson. Did anybody else have anything that they want? Oh, Chief Mix. I think we definitely want to hear from Chief Mix.
Good evening. So I, I want to clarify something on the public safety issue. Uh, first of all, the fire chief can't be here because there's a large fire in Rockland and, uh, the Hanson engine and whatnot is out of town. So, um, he couldn't be here. What I want, especially you who are worried about our responses, especially with the ambulance, it's not going to change. We're going to get there. To be perfectly honest with you, we don't usually use Rollercoaster Road to get to Lakeside. It's a narrow road. It's not a road that I want to go down in an emergency vehicle unless I have to respond on that road. If I'm going to go to Lakeside, I'm going to use the more improved roads that are wider, and I can actually travel a little quicker on. So please, stop with, I shouldn't say stop. I, I, I hear your fears, but please, um, i- if nothing comes out of this tonight, relax a little bit on that, okay? We're going to get to you. Storms, yeah, it's a pain in the butt. Yes, the second regress would make things easier for us, but we have roads like this all over town, and we deal with it. And we've dealt with it, well, since the town was a town, before it was a town. It's a, it's definitely a quality of a life issue, but that doesn't fall under police or fire. And I can't in good conscience stand in front of a judge in land court and say, yeah, Your Honor, this is going to cause, you know, a, a problem with police response. I can't do it. That's what the response to the board was.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah, and Chief Thompson also said that he felt that he had told us guys that the fence was up and that the regional dispatch knows that the fence is up, and so
And I'll address a couple of things there. Yes, in the winter, it was blocked. Yes, it was unblocked, because when I found out it was blocked, I said, open it up back up. There was no notice to public safety, there was no notice to the surrounding towns, there was no notice to the nine-one-one center. I can't have that. He gave us notice. It's a weird situation. Uh, I've spent a couple of days reading about land court, and I don't envy you, Kate, at all with any of that stuff, because it's going back to sixteen something in old English. It's horrible. The, the best advice and everything that I've seen in case law is, those who are aggrieved have to make the complaint. So I, I'm not sure the town can even go to land court and say, you got to do something here. If you guys have something in your deed that says you have access, there you go. That's, that's where the main recourse is going to be. But mostly important that I'm here, and again, the fire chief apologizes for not being here, we're going to respond. And you know something? If your trees, if there's a tree down, guess what? You go up in the priority list. If I can't get to your house, those streets go up in a priority with national grid, uh, whatever tree company's in town. And for that matter, if we can remove it ourselves, we do. We have to, we try not to leave any roads that we can't get to a house. Might not be able to go all the way down one, you might have to turn around and go back the way you came, but the other side, we're going to get to. That's part of all of the, how we deal with storms. So I, I just, I don't want people having a lot of anxiety over that, okay? Was there a question? Madam Chair, I'm sorry, I'm sure you'll go through.
Oh, no, feel free, yeah.
As we, as I stated before, there's trees down a lot, especially in the winter. That's my trouble time. How, when minutes matter, how are you going to, are we going to be the first to clear the road?
Ma'am, we do everything based on a priority in town, and I'll let you in on another secret. If you have a medical issue, when each storm comes on, I don't, we don't keep this, because I don't want your medical information, but we have what are called the life support. So if we know that somebody's on oxygen, or we know somebody has a certain medical conditions, and doesn't necessarily have family or transportation, or something else to help themselves, you go up on a priority list on how we open up. Perfectly honest with you, it might be days. I can't control a blizzard, it could be days.
If you have only one access.
But ma'am, listen to me on this, I understand that. It would be better to have a regress. Again, I can't stand in front of a judge and say, "Your Honor, it's, this is the big problem." I can't do that in clear conscience, because there's a whole bunch of other ones around town. There's a whole bunch of other roads that are like that, and, but they've existed from the beginning.
Right, so when we bought the house, that was an open.
You could go down to Pine Grove.
It was very comfortable that we had two ways to get in and out.
You mean, yeah, but do you mean your road, you're on Lakeside?
Lakeside, right near Rollercoaster.
Okay, Lakeside used to go all the way down to Pine Grove, from what I was told, I was, but see, this is what I mean. Look, it happened before.
When I purchased the land, I knew what was available.
I understand that.
We check for safety, always. I mean, I'm gonna be taking his mother, who's eighty-five years old, and I'm gonna be taking her down.
So, I just want to rein it in just a bit. I do appreciate Chief Mix, you speaking for Chief Thompson, and I think explaining that it's really a matter of what could be truthfully stated in land court. And I think you make a point that this may ultimately end up being a civil issue. As I said, we're gonna work with our co, with our enforcement officer and our planning board, because there may be a violation of things there that we might be able to work with, okay? I'm not promising, I'm not committing, that is not my area of expertise. But having talked to some of the folks that are in that area, that might be an avenue. But in parallel, you may want to think about what, what legal action you want to take. You know, and I really hate to think of a time when a neighbor would have to sue a neighbor in order to do what is right and decent, but, you know, at times, that may be the only recourse. And, I don't know, Chief Mix, did you have anything else you wanted to?
No, just, I want to make sure, please, tell me your anxiety level on that has at least gone down a little bit, because you have, you have great firefighters, parabetics, and you got great cops here, you really do. And they're gonna do the best they can for you. And, you know, we're not perfect, we can't be perfect all the time, but I can tell you, from twenty-six years being a cop, I had one blizzard where we literally took a front-end loader, put chains on the ambulance, and dragged it. Our response time was like a half hour, but we got there. And we had to go through a couple of trees and other things, and cut, and hope the wires are dead, when we're not supposed to do it that way. My guys and the firefighters will do everything they can to get to you. I've even run down streets, picked people up, and carried them home in snow. We'll do what we can for you, so please, leave, let the anxiety level go down a little bit, okay? Anybody else? Yes, sir?
I believe what you're saying confidently, that you would be there. I think what a lot of these people are worried about is, we all know that you are familiar with driving fire trucks, you are familiar with driving trucks. As soon as you put that truck in reverse, no matter what it is, car, truck, boat, your chances of something happening has gone extremely high. That's, I'm not, I don't, I think.
I understand that, sir, but...
I don't have any reason to defend yourself. I believe you would be at my doorstep. I get that. But what these people, and that's the rolling ball effect that you were talking about. And I, you know, we have, we have kids, we've got dogs, we've got people, sometimes they're busy doing the yard, they don't know. And we, you know, backup alarms, if you have earphones in, you're not here.
I understand that, sir, but, you know what, we back up every day, I mean...
I just want to take a little pressure off of you, because I believe you would be at my doorstep. And anybody else?
Look, this, to be honest with you, I may sound aggravated, because I am, and I'm not aggravated at anybody in this room, I'm not aggravated at people that have decided to do what they decided to do. I think there was probably a better way to do it. I'm more aggravated, because this is mainly a civil issue, and I cannot deal with civil issues. There's very few civil issues police can enforce, and I can't touch this. And it was a tricky thing when he was trying to block it with snow and other stuff, and I could make the argument that Pembroke doesn't know this, okay? My own guys didn't know this. We're not doing it arbitrarily. One time, somebody decided to put rocks across the road. Those didn't last too long there either. This played out differently, where there was some notice, then we did some research, and the research went, "I'm not sure we can do anything here." And as long as we found out what was going on, we just couldn't, we can't say that, we can't respond to you and get to you in a timely manner. I just can't say that.
I think awareness is ninety-nine percent of the game with you guys, and you do know that. I would like to have, if people don't mind, have, since we have got our town council here, I'd like to have Ms. Fierdoff weigh in with her thoughts.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Kimikatis?
I just want to add two points before she starts, that way maybe she can ask those questions for us.
Okay, sure, yeah.
So, my, I guess my first question is, to the board, do you have an order from any land court judge, or any superior court judge, that you chose not to enforce this issue with the police department, or the zoning enforcement officer? So I'm wondering, how did you guys come to the point that you said, "You know what, we're not gonna enforce it"? Because, to me, that's opening up a terrible precedent, and maybe Kate can answer some of this, because once you allow this, I can tell you that there's a number of people in this room that are gonna start putting roadblocks up.
Well, I think, I think that's what Ms. Fierdoff is gonna, is gonna, is going to let you know as much as she can about what she counseled this board on.
Okay, so that's my first point, and there's a number of situations, I was bringing up one earlier, and Hanson, it's a zoning enforcement officer's job to enforce that. It is not the selectmen, it is not the police department, it's the zoning enforcement officer, and sometimes it's peripunitively, I discussed that earlier. The other thing I was gonna, you know, that I wanted to add to that was, you don't have an order from a court that says, "Listen, you guys gotta allow this guy to do this." He arbitrarily decided to put this up, came in front of you, no one was here, and you said, "We're not," you, you know, whatever you did, you said, "We're not taking action on it." Now, to do that is setting a really, really, especially in this town, and a lot of towns, it's setting a really bad precedent, a precedent. What I would also say is, you guys are all familiar with go and drive, right? It would be, to me, that's the equivalent of blocking off go and drive, and then saying, "Okay, now you're gonna access via Brook Street." Yes, it's not a private way, but the only difference between a private way and a public way is one that's not been accepted by a town, because it doesn't meet certain standards. And I agree with the chief that, you know, he would do everything in his power, but sometimes things are out of his power, and sometimes things are out of the power of the chief of fire, and as great as they are at their jobs, I would tell you that with a second means of egress, it allows them to more adequately do their job. And that is, that is planning 101, and zoning 101. And I would respectfully say that if you allow this to continue, and I know it's not you, whatever board decides to enforce this, that potentially there could be a liability in the town of Hanson. You guys should also consider that, since it's been this way for the past seventy years. And all these people in here, I don't think any of them lived here for more than seventy years, but it's been that way since before all of them lived here. So, considering that, I understand you should not get involved in private property issues, but you should not allow a precedent such as this. This is, to me, is the definition of insanity. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Fierdoff?
Yeah, sure. So, before I begin, I just want to clarify a few things and set a couple of rules, right? So, don't take anything that I'm going to say as being unsympathetic to your situation, because that's not the case. Further, don't take anything that I say as legal advice to you in the audience. I don't represent you, I represent the town, I'm appointed by the board. So when I give advice, I give advice to the board, and typically, that's done in private session, right? So, I want to clarify a couple things about roads. So, roads become public. There are very clear ways that roads become public. So the first is easy, right? It's an approval by a town, needed after a layout hearing by the board, right? And it's a statutory process to accept a public road. That obviously isn't, hasn't been done here. There is another way, by dedication, but that's the only road which existed prior to eighteen forty-six, so these ancient ways. And it's done through gifting and through acceptance, either tacit or express, right? But I believe this road is younger than eighteen forty-six. So then the final way is prescription, right? And that's what everyone's sort of talking about. That's what Bill Cushing was talking about, because it's been used for seventy years. And prescription really is similar to adverse possession, right? But you're not giving up the fee, you're giving access. So, prescription can be in the form of an easement, which is private or creating a public way. It's a little bit different in the public way context, because what the courts have said is, yes, you have to do it with a prescriptive period, and yes, it has to be adverse. But distinguish between adverse and simply permissive use, meaning I allow the invitees to use that road, right? So, it's a little bit different than me having my garden extend, which would be adverse possession, my garden extend into my neighbor's property, and I use that garden for twenty years. That's, that's naturally, because I'm not allowing the neighbor to use the property adverse. But when you're talking about roads and making them public, there's often that expectation that people come down the roads, and it's more permissive. So the standard is a little bit more difficult to achieve, okay? Now, the cases where property owners are saying, "This road has become public, and therefore, the board's responsibility", right, are generally property owner to property, right? The seminal cases are, I have them, Bassett v. Martin, then the Middleborough, but that's where Middleborough was trying not to, right? So, there were, they're generally private property disputes, because what happens is that the property owners decide, is this adverse or non-adverse, right? Now, that's not to say that you all, and I don't know, because my job isn't to look at your deeds and examine the history to find out what's happened. I don't know what your situation is. But, the, it's not to say that you may or may not have easement rights, right? So there are express easements, they're spelled out in the deeds, and they say what you can, what you can do on this kind of shared property. And you think about that for access, for roads, it can be an easement to a septic tank, an easement to the beach, it can, there are many types of easements, and if they're express, it's spelled out in your deed, right? Oftentimes, road, the fee ownership goes to the center line, but it's not always the case. Sometimes the original developer retains title, and sometimes the fee, so, meaning you own all the sticks, all the ownership rights to that property, goes to the center line. Other times, it's just an easement, so you have your property subject to an easement for others to pass and repass. You can have an easement by necessity, meaning I need this road, this access point, this walkway, to access my property, and without that, my property becomes unusual, unusable. You can have, there are many things that could have happened, but what I don't know is what your deeds say, or what the court history says. And to Bill Cushing's point earlier, yes, I've been provided with many, many documents from property owners, but I don't review them, because that is not a town issue. If there was a case, and I'll tell you, actually, because I pulled it up, I wanted to see what the case was called. So, there was a case, Murray v. Sullivan, it's a land court case, I believe it has to do with your property. I did not review that case, because it doesn't involve the town. So the decision may be resolved in the way easement issues are resolved, through property owner to property owner. To the chief's point, this is a civil dispute between property owners, when there is not a public safety issue. And I will absolutely not presume to step in the chief, either chief's shoes, or the DPW supervisor, his shoes, to determine whether or not this is a public safety issue, right? That's not my area of expertise, I defer to that. So, in those situations, whether or not there's an enforcement action, to Bill Cushing, to your point, have you looked at a land court case and ignored the land court's ruling? Well, the town doesn't enforce land court rulings to which the town is not a party, it's not the responsibility of the town. So, think, for example, if you had an easement to access your septic system on someone else's property. The town isn't going to say, "Owner A, you have a responsibility to allow the septic owners access to his septic tank on Owner A's property." We're not going to come in and step, step on the toes of those two property owners, that's a property dispute. If this is a private easement issue, the town is not going to involve itself in a private property dispute. Just like the town's not gonna enforce a divorce decree, you know, they're not going to enforce a contract action between a company and a private party, they're not gonna get involved. So if there's a judge not involving the town, the town will enforce it, okay? Now, as to fence viewer, I think I heard someone say that, that's generally, and while I was sitting here, I pulled up the statute, having to do with a height, is a spike fence, right? Everyone's heard that spike fence. What does that mean? It has to do with an excessively high fence, which, so, high, and, so, compound, maliciously erected it, to annoy and all of those things. So, the fence has to do with the height, and that's where a fence viewer comes in, as opposed to blocking access to what could be private property. Again, I haven't investigated your title, so I don't know where that stands. And then, what, Bill, you had a couple other comments, which I'm not sure if I addressed them all, but if I haven't addressed something, you're happy to address them. So what I'm saying is, this issue, it seems to me, there's a consensus, that this is not a public way, and that's what I heard the residents say, that this is in fact an easement issue, and whether or not you should enforce your rights, again, I'm not there to speak to whether you should or shouldn't do something, or whether you can or will be successful. But I'm here to say that those pieces are not town issues, to which we would have standing to assert a lawsuit about, okay? So Laura, did I hit everything?
That was, that was quite a bit that you hit. I think Mr. Cushing had one or two things, and then, if you don't mind, would just like to...
Yeah, I know you have a long agenda, and I'm sorry, I don't want to keep blowing you with this. But, Ms. Fierdoff, I do have a couple of questions for you, and I do understand that you're talking, can you hear me? I do understand that you're talking about, you know, we're talking about private property. So, you know the towns do have zoning bylaws that do enforce private property issues, we can agree with that, am I correct?
Well, so, the zoning bylaws, if someone's violating some zoning bylaw, for example, and I'll give you a for example. I illegally and without the proper permit erect a porch, and it extends into the setback, I can enforce that as the zoning enforcement officer, because it violates the bylaw. So it violates the setback, and it was done in recent history, right?
Yeah. And Robyn Sandy, what's your address?
Two sixty-five.
So, two sixty-five, so I haven't, and I know this is not, but, so, you know, I looked at the deeds for, for two fifty-two Lakeside Road, and there were four lots subdivided at that time, and lots B and C, which are two sixty-five and the next door neighbor, that live on Lakeside Road, I didn't do a title rundown of every single property on Lakeside Road and Rollercoaster Road, but what I did do is a title rundown on those, the ones that were divested into prior to that. And, you know, just start looking at those in particular, they have rights to access over that, they live on Lakeside, and that's a roll, and that was divested in nineteen fifty-seven. I completely agree with what you're saying about, the town doesn't want to get into, you know, legal disputes about private property issues, but, Ms. Fierdoff, what alls I'm trying to say is, is that to not enforce this as a zoning enforcement issue, not from a legality standpoint, but a zoning enforcement issue, is to set a terrible precedent, because...
She's not saying that. She's not saying that, though. She never said that.
That's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying. I'm not saying that she said that, I'm saying that I'm making a statement, and I think it's a terrible precedent to set. I'm not saying you are saying to set that, I'm saying, but if it was to be set, I think that's a terrible precedent, because Hanson has a lot of situations like this, and then we're deciding, the chief of police and the fire chief are deciding what is important and what is not important, and the residents are not. So I don't think we should leave it entirely up to the chief of police and the fire department to determine emergency and non-emergencies, that's all I'm saying.
No, that, so just to clarify, I think...
So I just want to be, I want to respond to that, I could.
Sure.
So from a zoning enforcement perspective, and maybe I misheard you, Bill, and I'm sorry if I did, but what you said was, I looked at the deed, and I determined that there were easement rights in that deed, and the town would have to enforce that through zoning enforcement action? And my question to you is, where in your zoning bylaw does it say that the zoning enforcement officer has the right to enforce a private agreement between parties, namely the deed? So what the zoning enforcement officer does is they say, here's the property line, right? And here's where the setbacks are, 15 feet, say. You can't erect a structure 15 feet from the property line, something like that. Or you can't erect a house at so many feet above, you know, the second level. I don't know, pick your poison.
Of course.
But there, what I'm missing from you, and what I thought I heard you say, was that the zoning enforcement officer is going to enforce the terms of the deed, which provide easement rights to the property owner, which are not part of the zoning bylaw.
No, I was...
Did I hear you correctly?
No, no, I'm sorry. I think that those things got conflated. I think he was talking about one thing and then moved into the other thing. I think, yeah, so I don't think he's expecting any enforcement of easement issues. He recognizes, I believe, that that's a private, you know, issue. I think he was sort of referring to some of the dead-end zoning regulations and some of those things, where this fence may now present, it may not, the erection of that fence may result in those properties not being in compliance with our current zoning regulations.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so, so...
Yeah, I'm sorry.
You can't create a non-conformity zone, is what you're saying?
Right, right.
Yes, yes.
And so, okay, I understand what you're saying now. So I would have to take a look at that a little more carefully, because in some contexts, you can't create a non-conformity. Certainly in a subdivision, you can create non-conforming lots, right? But I'm not sure if that's applicable in this circumstance, but I'm not foreclosing that possibility, and I would have to think about it.
And I appreciate that, Kate.
Okay, one last point.
That's what I was trying to say, is I think this is where we're going to need Kate's office to work with planning and with the building department to see if that's an option for a path forward. I'm not making any commitments, I'm not making any promises, it can be explored.
Yep. Please, one last point. So Planning Board determines adequate access on these ways. Most recently, they did a roller coaster road. So what you're saying is the town is going to say, this road is adequate, the Planning Board, you know, determines adequate access, right? So whether it's roller coaster road or lakeside road, if I want to put a lot in, they're determining adequate access over ways that they're saying they're not enforcing. So it's, the statement is hypocritical, right? Either it's a private way that you can enforce, or it's a private way that can be traveled through public access. You get what I'm saying, you can't have it both ways. Either it's a private way, and you can't determine whether it's adequate or not, or it's a private way with public access that you can determine that's adequate or not. And I can tell you, most recently, the Planning Board on Rollercoaster Road has determined, I don't know the address, the budding, what's your address?
140.
140. And I do know that they've determined that was adequate, and they're having them do some upgrades, I think, to the road. And, you know, so they're making determinations on ways that you're saying you have no control over, and their right of ways, private property.
No, so to be clear, the Planning Board's role in looking at access is for the creation of new lots, right? That's creating something new that didn't exist before, as opposed to, this is a little bit different, right? This is enforcing easement rights. So I would say that's conflating two separate issues, because you're coming to the board and saying, here, this is something brand new in addition to the town, creating more density, creating more housing, all of the things, some of which are positive, some of which have negative implications, and they need to understand if it's adequate so that safely it can be accessed.
Okay.
And I don't know the particulars of that application and what was in the Planning Board's mind for the determination. I don't know if it had to do with ingress and egress, or if it had to do with...
And in all honesty...
Lit, or whatever.
Yeah, I've tried to give sufficient latitude here, but I think we're getting way off topic, and we're definitely not...
Yes, I'm done, thank you very much.
Okay. So in short, if we can put a bow, well, I don't, I can't put a bow on it, but if we can start to put a bow on it, we will see if we can have Town Council work with planning and with our building inspector. Did anybody want to say anything, have any comments, or...
The only, I just have a couple comments, not knowing the area very well, is, he's blocking the road for vehicular traffic and pedestrian traffic, or just vehicular?
Well, people walk through.
You can't walk around?
No, no. It's a little tricky.
They don't want it, but some people just do it anyway.
Okay. And then, I did, from the main road, typed in Lakeville Avenue, it did send me right down, you know, Rollercoaster Road, not knowing...
GPSing it.
The GPS did. Is there something that can be done at the GPS level, at the Google Maps level, at the whatever level, to say, hey, by the way, this is a construction zone, this is a something zone, so that it won't keep doing that and have people go down the wrong road and...
Well, let's get it resolved first before you change the maps.
Yeah, take the barricade down, don't mind changing the GPS. It's ridiculous.
I think he's just trying, I think he's just trying to be helpful.
Just try, yeah.
Sure.
I'll have a question.
Yes, Mr. Hickey. Well, I just want, I want to take comments from the board, because we have heard quite a bit from the folks in attendance.
Up until a few months ago, and it may be down to one carrier, but there were many people that lived in town that used different trash carriers. And I know you folks are all neighbors. How many carriers go between Rollercoaster and Lakeside? Does anyone, or does anyone use different carriers? You have four different carriers?
Yes.
Okay, I've already said about the backing up, and I did it for a living. I just wanted to know how many possible carriers were down there, because whether it's one day or four different days, you have four different trash trucks on those two streets. Matt, you're the neighbor, and so, is the resident that lives at 252, is he here tonight?
No.
Oh, sorry.
No, he is. No, he is not here tonight. He told me he would not be here tonight.
Okay. So my question to the board, and to the chair, and to council, would be, and I understand, and please don't take this the wrong way, I believe right from the beginning, this is not a town matter, it's a private matter, it's a private road. But I want to help, and the board wants to help as much as we can. Is it possible between, Laura, between two of us, and Lisa, and council...
I'm just laughing that you're looping me in on this.
Well, I mean, it could just be one of us. What I want to do is, I want to talk to the gentleman that owns this piece of property, and find out why he's putting up the fence, because we've heard everything, why we don't want the fence there. I haven't heard one good reason why the fence...
My question was, I don't even know why, I was like, I don't want to leave here before I find out, how did he just pull off putting a fence up?
Because, from my understanding, and I think Lisa just said that, is that it, Lisa, I mean, I'm sorry, Kate, that it's, we have no jurisdiction there, and it is private property, and that he can. But what I would like to talk to this gentleman about is why he did it. And I don't want to get into speculation, I want the words to come out of his mouth. Because, I'm sorry?
Well, okay, I...
Right, and that's what I'm trying to get at, well, let's get to the order.
Okay, I'm sorry, I've lost complete control of this. Okay, it's just completely jumped the tracks, and it's going the wrong way. So, we were just about to...
I know, and I started that, but...
Coming around the corner here. So I hear what you're saying, and I too have many, many questions about what the objective is here. Again, though, I think that's beyond the scope of what this board can do and this meeting, and I definitely would not take it off the table, Mr. Hickey. I think we could talk about it privately, and talk about whether Ms. Fedorov believes that that is legally in our best interest to do, and whether we then are not just dipping our toes into a private way and private matter, but jumping whole hog into it. And I know where your heart is at, because my heart's right there too, so...
Well, I think we dipped, and not interrupt you, but we, I think we dipped our toes when we put it on the agenda.
Well, here's, and you know what, in all honesty, and I hope you guys think I did the right thing by doing that, I made the call because I thought, this, here's what my, here's how I look at everything. How would I want my selectmen to react if this was a situation happening to me? And do I know that this is something we may not be, like, I don't want to hold out any false promises, and I've tried to be really clear. I don't know that this is anything we're going to be able to satisfy. That said, I'm going to try to effectuate some positive change here. I don't know what that's going to look like. We will work, I have already talked to the chair of planning, and I've asked Ms. Green to talk to our town planner, and we'll have a conversation with Mr. Glass. And already we know our legal firm is, yes, Mr. Weeks.
No, thank you. So the thing for me is, I appreciate everybody being here, because, you know, behind the scenes, we have lots of conversations, and a lot of the times, people aren't pretty, they're not privy to what we talk about, because they are behind closed doors, and we need that confidentiality with our legal team to be able to do this. So what you see may not look like a lot of movement, but there is a lot of empathy and a lot of movement in the back, just so you know. And we're all on the side of trying to do what's right for everybody, because we've looked at it from every angle, we've looked at it from the perspective of, well, what does it mean to own property? And what does that mean, even if we don't like the easement idea? You know, what is it, what does it mean to do what you want to do on your own private property? I mean, I remember being on the Planning Board to speak to that, and we were talking about how far you can put your shed next to your fence, and it's like, well, whether it's 15 feet or five feet, it's my property, so I'll put the shed wherever I want to put the shed, right? But you have these rules and regulations that you have to go through, and we talked about it to that same extent, is what does this precedent set? What does that mean? We've looked at it from a planning perspective, a zoning perspective, a legal perspective, and a freedom perspective, quite frankly, is you have the freedom to do what you want to do with your own property. So we came back to, okay, what does that precedent set? I remember when I was living on Hancock Street, my neighbor used to joke, because he owned both sides of the road, and he said, well, if I wanted to put a toll booth here, well, no one can stop me from doing that. You're finding a very similar situation right now. What's to stop everybody from just chunking out the road and just doing what they want to do, or filling out potholes, or doing whatever they want to do? So we've talked about it, we have, and I want you to know that we've talked about all of these things, and we're trying really hard to come up with a solution that makes sense. What we've fallen back on is the fact that it is, right now, a civil matter, and that ties our hands, because we don't know how to handle that situation, because we haven't come up to a situation like this in this way before. What's helpful for me is seeing the petition, I was waiting for this, I actually was talking about this, at one of our meetings, talking about this. What's it going to do to the community? What's it going to do to the neighborhood? Because that person now has to have those conversations openly and freely with their neighbors, and they're going to get all that feedback back. So this is, to me, pretty symbolic of the community coming together, which is what it should be doing, right? I'm very happy to hear, and I back everything that the police chief has said, because nothing's going to stop them from getting to anybody. So safety, although, won't be necessarily ideal in terms of that street if it was open, no one's going to say, we put our firefighters and our police and our EMS against anybody, we have the best in the biz, and it just is what it is. So they're going to do fine. But the community coming together, this open conversation, this is what we needed to have, what I would recommend is that we use this as an opportunity, because we've been talking about this for a year now, to start bringing some of these boards together and to start having these conversations. So instead of one person or a group of people, we actually bring zoning and planning, and we actually task these folks with trying to come up with a solution, if there is one. But I think that's the biggest thing that, Bill, you had brought up, is what can we reinforce, what can we do, what can't we do? That's the question of the day right now, because you've been trying to figure that out for like a month now, however long we've been talking about this. We don't know what we can do, and it does set a weird precedent if we go one way or the other. If we go one way and say you can't do it, well then, that means that anybody in similar situations can no longer do that, and what does that mean for land use planning and all that stuff down the road? And if we say you can do it, what does that mean for chunking up roads whenever you want to? So it's a double-edged sword. That's what we're dealing with, and I just want everybody to know that we're really wrestling with like every single angle. A lot of the stuff that you brought up tonight, super important, I just want you to also know, we've already talked about it. So it's a lot of stuff that we've already brought up on the back end, because we do have an eclectic group of people here that kind of bring a lot of different things and different opinions together. So we are working on it. I would recommend that we task or use this opportunity to kind of bring some boards together and formally task them with doing that.
I agree, Mr. Weeks, and I think in general, the elephant in the room is just private ways in general.
Well, exactly.
Honestly, and we're not alone, and Mr. Cushing shared an article from the Boston Globe that I had read, and I remembered at the time, reading and thinking, holy, you know what, this applies to so many roads in Hanson. So it is a problem across the state. That doesn't make you feel much better, because really, you know, most people are concerned with, you know, where they're living. Ms. Marine, did you have any questions or comments you wanted to make?
Because I wasn't on the beginning of it, I really don't. I'm puzzled why he did it, be that I'm, you know, I just, I can't imagine living in a neighborhood and doing something like this, I just can't imagine it.
We like you.
And that's going to, you'll be my last comment for the night.
I don't even have a comment. My question is, can we come back in a month? I mean, when, when do we know what to think?
We definitely will keep the communication line open with you folks, and I very much, I don't want you to think this is a once and done, and that's it. You know, it's a weird thing, because like I started off by saying, we're not the land court, right? So we can't, you know, we're not a planning board, so we're not having like an official hearing, we're not ZBA, we're not having like an official hearing on it. I think we've sort of said what we're going to try to do with the path forward. And I think a month, I mean, although we are starting to enter vacation time when it's difficult to get access to people, but I think a month seems reasonable to, at the very least, we'll make sure that we're keeping the communication lines open and let you guys know what this, like, we've talked to planning, we've done da-da-da-da. And if it gets legs, if, you know, we have traction before then, then I'll certainly put it on the agenda, and we can have another discussion.
Is that, I was also thinking, understanding you only have X amount of power, but that's going to help the powers that be, what's the next after the rest of all?
Sure, yeah, yeah. I think the key is just to keep the communication lines open. You know, if there's, if any, I really hesitate to say this, but if there's any additional development there, if you could let us know about that, so that we're aware as we're trying to work through the issues with the folks that may be able to help out, that would be much appreciated. I do appreciate where you guys are coming from, and I mean it from the bottom of my heart, when I say that I empathize with what's going on, and I know how I would feel. And so we're going to, we're going to try to effectuate positive change. That's what we're going to work on.
So, Ms. Kim, can we table this and put it on the agenda for saying, follow me, the meeting after that? I mean, I think that makes sense.
We just said a month.
We just said a month, and I'll be honest with you, Bill, I've got a new board, we've got committee assignments, I've got, you can't even believe the amount of stuff. I don't even know how we're going to get through it in the next two meetings. So I want to give some time. I appreciate that you guys want to keep us accountable, and you want to hear what's going on, and I'm fine with that. But I don't think two weeks is going to give us enough time, so I would say about a month. Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right, thank you all.
Thank you very much.
I'm going to take a brief recess. Thank you so much. We took a brief recess, and we are back, and we are moving right along with our agenda. And I think the rest of it should be fairly light, insert heavy sarcasm. So, public communication plan. I asked to put this on there, but really, this is an item that I'd like, I think we're going to have to discuss further as a board, and I'd really like you guys to think about, what kind of things could we do to... and I'd really like you guys to think about, um, what kind of things could we do to improve our communication to the public? And, you know, about things like town meeting, you get a vote, you should show up. Um, elections, you get a vote, you should show up. Um, I, I, you know, um, pu, so here's a couple of things I just thought it, to get, like, us percolating. Anne, did you have something?
I, I'm pretty good with a computer. I'm all over the place. It's very difficult to find information on that website.
Okay, well, that, and it's very difficult.
I am not a web designer at all, but that website has got to be revamped, and things have to be easy to find.
Okay, I agree, that, that was bullet four for me. Um, so here's a couple of things that I just think we should noodle and think about, and we can have further discussion. And if you guys have other ideas, I'd love to hear them, and we don't have to solve all of this tonight. But I think one of the things I had heard from the new members, and I've always felt this way, is that we really have to do better at communicating with the public about a host of things. About committee openings, about what we're talking about, about, um, what the responsibilities of the different boards are, about town meeting, about town elections, and the list just goes, and even just fun stuff. You know, like, what's happening around town? And no, that's not necessarily the Board of Selectmen's job, but I think that as the, um, the leaders of the town, that we should really set the precedence and try to be better about communicating. So here's a couple of things. Now, with the, in the last board I had mentioned, and we had agreed, um, that we would like to have a policy that requires all committees and commissions and departments to post their agendas on a timely basis on the town website. Um, that is not happening. Um, I did originally start by writing a bylaw, but, um, our council said, you really don't need a bylaw for that. Just adopt a policy, and they will have to follow. So I'd like the board to think about that, and we'll have, if you are in general agreement, um, then we will have Ms. Green, um, work on drafting a policy. And my thought process on that is, you cannot complain that people are not signing up for committees, that people are not attending town meeting, and people are not participating in town elections if you are not giving them the information that they need to do that. Um, and not everybody will use the information, but there might be somebody out there, like you, Mrs. Rain, who goes and they, they want to be engaged, or they're looking something up, and they say, my, I can't find it. I don't even know where this information is. How am I going to get engaged? Where's the meeting? I don't even know what they're talking about. So, that was one thing. Um, I would really like to increase, we've got a Facebook page, and we have a, um, we have a volunteer, um, who, who puts things up on our Facebook page. I really would like to be, um, very consistent with posting the Board of Selectmen agenda every week on that Facebook page. We, we're very inconsistent on that. Um, and I'd also like to have the boards and committees and commissions that are having hearings to use that Facebook. Yes, I know that they're sending the mid, you know, the, the hearing notices to the abutters and all the good stuff that they're supposed to do. Uh, but I'd really like to try to, like, I guess, my basic premise is, are we doing the bare minimum? Yes, we're doing the bare minimum. How's that working out? Not working out very good. We, we barely have a quorum at, at town meeting. Uh, we have apathy at the poll, people just aren't coming. You know, it's a hot day, I'm not going to go vote. I mean, that's crazy. Um, so, um, I, I'd really like to increase that. Um, to Mrs. Rain's point, I would really like to see, and I, I am happy to report that we were front leaders in this, um, I'd like to see our website, um, cleaned up so that, um, email, contact emails and numbers are provided for all department heads and chairs of committees and commissions. Um, I'm not saying everybody, but at the very least, we should have the Chair of Committees and Commissions and the Department Head, so that if I have a problem, I don't have to go through the voicemail system, pressing fifteen different messages and trying to figure out just to get the wrong, um, thing.
Could I ask a question?
Yeah.
Do we have a, a dedicated website person?
We have an IT person. We have an IT person. This is a significant overhaul, so it will take a while.
Okay, all right.
But yeah, um, but, uh, but for us, just, I know you guys got the FYI email from Lisa. Um, I, we now all have our email address on there. Um, it's a pop-up form. Lucia worked with Steve Mulberg, our IT person, and very quickly turned it around, um, so that if people need to reach us, they can. Um, pub, now, here's something I thought we might try, and I know past Boards of Selectmen have tried it with mixed results, but other towns do it, and I thought, why not? This is not like a lifetime commitment, we could try it. What about a public office hours? Um, say, once per month? Uh, we can alternate who does it, and whether it's in the morning or at night. And if it turns out after six months, nobody shows up, then we go, all right, that was a failed experiment.
Go and sit in an office.
Yeah, like we said, like we say, you know what? Uh, next Monday night, there'll be two of us, um, sitting, um, at five o'clock, we'll be in the Selectmen's office. If anybody's got any issues, you can come and bring it to us.
Sounds like a good idea.
Um, well, just to add to that, um, I was thinking of this earlier, that Tuesday nights, when we don't have meetings, town hall is open, everybody's here, that if we had someone sitting in the copy room, there's a table in there, um, and we could take turns.
I mean, how do people feel about that? I know it's an additional commitment, but I just feel like nothing ventured, nothing gained, right? I mean, if we do it, and we, we, you know, have a couple of hours out of our life, we're never going to get back, sitting there, and nobody comes.
But we need morning hours and evening hours.
I agree with that, because not everybody, a lot, a lot of the elderly folks don't go comfortable driving, you know.
That could be by appointment, um, where one of us wouldn't have to sit there, waiting for people to come in. But if somebody contacted the Selectmen's office, that they can't make it at night, and wanted to have a conversation, um, yeah, we could do it by appointment.
People can get into the building, say, say it was like five to six on a Tuesday, the door is open.
Oh, yeah.
So the people, people have to be able to access the building.
All right, so what I think I'm hearing you guys saying is, you're not running out the door, screaming, saying this is a horrible idea. Okay, um, and that, um, morning, we could do by appointment. Um, and we could do Tuesdays, when we don't have meetings, on a rotating basis, and we'll just, we'll just kind of get like a sign-up sheet or something, and, you know, if somebody can't make it, then they can ask somebody else to, to, you know. Uh, what do you guys think about that? Are you okay with that?
We've been having meetings pretty much every week since I've started, so that's going to be difficult.
That, that's a good point. Um, if it's not a Tuesday night, like, for instance, this month is pretty busy, because we've got it every Tuesday night. Um, you know, we can revisit and say, you know, I, what I'd like to do is kind of take a look out for, like, the next two or three months at least, and see what nights we can do. And if it doesn't end up being a Tuesday night, I like Jim's idea, because if it's a Tuesday night, and somebody comes to me and talks to me about something that like, say, involves the building commissioner, I can say, let's pop right up there and talk to Carrie. Um, you know, and we can, we can have Carrie talk directly to the person. That's ideal, that's like very efficient. Um, but if it isn't a Tuesday night, and it's a Wednesday night, then we just make sure that that door is unlocked, and we're here, and the rest of the building is locked, and we can do that, too.
And also, by phone, you guys can maybe pick up the phone during that time. Um, we can maybe have an assigned number, I don't even know if that's possible, but if people wanted a call between whatever hours, someone is there, one of you guys will be there to pick up, guaranteed a pickup. I don't know if that's even a possibility.
All right, so, so, um, let's try to put some meat on this bone, and, um, get, you know, we'll work on some dates. We'll throw them out to everybody, and people can see what works for them and what doesn't. And I know everybody's got, you know, busy personal lives, I'm not trying to burden anybody. Uh, but I, I just, again, I think we have to think, like, if, if we were out there and we wanted to reach a selectman, would people say they're accessible? You know, would people say, I feel like, oh, I, yeah, I can just go up there on a random Tuesday night and, you know, talk to people, and I don't have to go before the whole, you know, up at the podium, and because that's, for some issues, it really wouldn't even be appropriate, and people don't necessarily always feel comfortable, there could be something that's a little more private, that they don't want to do that with. All right, so we'll work on that.
One, I'd like, I like the idea of Tuesday night, and it's good that people will know it's a Tuesday night, but I also like the idea of appointments, too, because there are some people that have something that happens every Tuesday night, and because of that, they'll never be able to come.
Yeah, yeah.
Thursday night's my night. I, if you have hired, you tell me you need me on Thursday night, can't do it. But, so I think we do need the set schedule and by appointment also, as, as needed, as, as it works out. I mean, I can't believe that we're just like, we are open to any time, but.
Yes.
Um, yes, um, Madam Chair, I just sent to all the Selectmen the 2022, 2023, um, Select Board meeting schedule.
Okay, great.
So, you'll be able to look at that schedule, and you'll see when we're meeting. Of course, we can always alter that schedule as necessary, uh, but that will give you an idea.
Isn't always every week, or is it?
No, it is not every other.
No, it doesn't seem like it.
It is not every week, and that's something I kind of wanted.
And sometimes it's every other week.
I, I kind of wanted to get a sense from you guys, because there's two ways we can do this, which is we can do couple-hour meetings, I mean, tonight was kind of an anomaly. Uh, but couple-hour meetings, um, and meet more frequently, or we can do, I don't want to call them marathon, but say like a three-hour meeting and meet less frequently. Uh, if you get much past the three hours, um, I can only speak for myself personally, my ability to really focus and think critically starts to deteriorate rapidly. Um, so, you know, I, I think that's kind of where I'm at. Um, you know, well, we've got a lot of stuff to go over. I mean, just like the list of stuff is, is really, you know, we've got audit reports, we, we need to have the auditor come and present to us. Uh, we're going to need to have Todd come and tell us where we're at financially. Um, and as crazy as it sounds, we have to start talking about October town meeting. So we are going to have, I know it sounds crazy, here we are in June, but, you know, in order to meet that deadline and back into when the warrant needs to be printed and all that stuff, we've got to start, you know, kind of have it on lockdown pretty much by the end of August, so, um, so I, I will try to be judicious about when we're meeting. I'll always defer to you guys and say, hey, it's looking like we've got a lot to talk about to you, we might need to add a meeting. Um, so, you know, um.
Not to interrupt.
No, feel free.
There was already a meeting added. Um, I thought Joe read the fourteenth and the twenty-eighth, and then Ian read tonight.
Yes, there was the twenty-first. I had asked, um, um, I had asked Lisa and Lucy, did you guys not send that message to them?
No, that, that was there, I know I got it. I know that you forwarded that.
Okay, I, I had, um, asked, um, them to forward a message saying that we would have to add a meeting on the twenty-first, because, um, we had some things that needed to be resolved before we could do appointments. Um, and we were hopeful that they would be resolved, um, this week, but they weren't. And so, um, they might be resolved by next week. And we just had a, like, it was getting crazy, the number of agenda items. It was like whack-a-mole. So, um, so, I, I hope you guys are able to make it. Um, and, and if you guys have got any vacation time coming up, let Lisa know, so that if, you know, if we get into this mode of saying, oh, we want to add a meeting, I, I don't want to exclude anybody, so we can work around vacation times.
I'm not doing anything until the end of August.
Okay.
If, if we do the end of August.
Okay. So just, yeah.
One thing on the communication plan, before we get off that, one thing that I'd love as a, as a, um, member of the town, when I go to town meeting, I, I get this book, and it says, all, you know, I don't, don't really understand what I'm voting on. I know when, when there's a question at the state level, they have a little pamphlet, and it says, this is the no, and this is the yay, and, and X amount of words people can write. For controversial items that people need to vote on, it might help to have a little bit of a primer, a little bit of a, 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 one paragraph explaining the pros and cons. What does my vote mean?
They do do that on controversy, I, I just saw that, like, I can't remember which one it was, but there was a, there was a controversial, it was the marijuana stuff.
Probably the override, oh, okay.
The marijuana stuff.
Okay.
And they, they did put out, but the other thing, too, is, one of the problems is, is a lack of participation. If they're really interested in something, they should come to the meetings and listen. It's hard to, I mean, you can read all this, but when, like, tonight, it was interesting, because there were so many people that had their input.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? So if you're not, I'm going to fall back on the B club. Getting information to people is, I mean, we can, we can put it out, we can Facebook it, we can send out emails, we can put up websites. If they don't pay attention to it, yeah, what do you do?
I agree with that, Anne, but I think at this point, we can't say.
No, we have to do it.
We're putting it out.
We have to do it.
Like, I, we can't really, like, I, I wish I could say, we're putting it out, but people still aren't showing up. But I can't even really say that.
I know, I know.
So, but I agree with you, we can't, we can lead a horse to water, right? I mean, that's as much as we can.
Hundred percent.
Lucia, um, it is getting a bit toasty in here.
A little bit, just a little bit.
Mr. Tarver.
All you have to do is just turn, just turn the, just turn that hand.
Turn Tarver for anyone who's watching this.
Just turn that, yeah.
Anything that you think would be good as well, as you were talking about earlier.
It should come on.
Make sure that's clear contact information for the department heads, department heads.
Well, that's the issue, yeah.
Maybe one of them, I just think it's pretty good to, the assistant as well on there, because a lot of times, it can be hard to, a lot of the chairs have, obviously, you know, I mean, we all have jobs, but, um, just to have a second person on there, there's a lot of times, just to get delegated to that person anyways.
That's a great idea, that's good.
Yeah.
Um, also, um, and we're going to get into this a little bit more, um, and when we talk about the, I don't know, school, whatever that topic was under. But, um, but, um, I did have a conversation with, um, Mr. Howard, uh, last week, um, and, um, I basically reiterated what this board had said, the prior board had said, um, which is something has jumped the tracks, um, with the communication between the Regional School District Committee and the Select Board. And in as much as we have to advocate for a budget and understand the budget, we need to have a more transparent, open dialogue on an ongoing basis. Um, and I, I appreciate and support the work that the school committee does, uh, but we are not elected to be school committee members. So I don't think it's reasonable to expect that we will only get our information if we attend their meetings. Um, Mr. Howard agreed, um, I've also talked to, um, the Chair of the Whitman Board of Selectmen, um, Mr. Lamatina, and he agreed. So, the three of us have agreed that we're going to really try to have the school committee chair and superintendent come early in the process, the budget process, um, so that we have a better and deeper understanding of the numbers there, um, and what's happening, and why they're asking for what they're asking for. Um, it's a huge part of our budget, and we just don't have the type of transparency that we need. Um, so, that's just one little thing. And then also, um, I had mentioned at the last meeting that I very much think it's important for us to all hear about the work that we're each doing. Um, because, um, if we're working effectively, we're each going to be on subcommittees, and we're each going to be acting on behalf of the board, but then bringing it back to the board to share that information. And, uh, we really haven't been doing that, um, at, at least for the last year or so. Um, it somehow just fell off of the agenda, and, um, you know, like, I'd like to know what's going on with the deregionalization, or what's going on with the Recreation Commission, if you're the liaison, or the senior center, or whatever. Or I'd like to mention what's going on with McQuan, or, um, you know, I'd like to hear about Plymouth County Hospital. The, and, and not just tell each other about it, but it's also a good way to get information out to the public, because a lot of times, people say, well, are they just not doing anything up at Plymouth County Hospital? Well, no, that's not the case. They're meeting, they're making decisions, but we're just not, again, we're not sharing the information. The, the things are happening, the actions are happening, we're just not communicating. So we got to get better at that.
I would second that, because I would, I would, I would say that a vast majority of people don't learn what some of these subcommittees are doing until an article is placed on town meeting warrant, and then you hear that there's like a land transfer, or there's like a new project that's being funded, or, or something in article format. So I think, I personally think that you'd have a lot more participation if we spent a lot more time, uh, earlier in the year, to your point earlier, prepping for town meeting early, so that you know some of the stuff is going to pop up, and the town feels more involved in the, in the issues, rather than finding out as we're putting together the warrant and throwing articles together. And then, you're going to find, I think, more people getting involved if they're, if, if, if the reports are more conversational style, rather than quick reports to try to beat the clock, so, you know, because there's a lot, there's a lot that we're doing. A lot of the information that we do, a lot of the meetings that we have are very rushed. It's just, let's get through the topic, and it, no one, no one does it in a bad way, no one does it in a malicious way or anything. It's just we always have so many things that we're trying to get through. So, we always have like bullet points and not real communicative information being discussed. So I think if we can kind of find a way to refine some of that stuff, so that it's not, in creating that dialogue, it doesn't create six-hour-long meetings, to your other point. If we can do that by making them a little bit more refined, I think we'd be in a better spot. How to do that, I have no idea, but I think.
Well, we're just going to start, we're just going to start somewhere. And I think keeping each other updated, um, and, you know, I, I'm just going to continuously FYI you guys on things that I learned, that the different department heads are telling me about, or that Lisa's telling me about, so that when we come to the meeting, everybody's kind of equally up to speed, as much as, you know, you're going to know as much as I know, which isn't always a lot, but, you know, um, you're going to, about a subject, and, 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 and if you don't want to be kept in the loop, you can just delete my emails. Um, and I won't take it personally, because I won't even know about it. Um, so, uh, did anybody have any other things that they really wanted to work on with, like, transparency, public engagement type of stuff?
Well, Madam Chair, the only thing I was going to say is, um, for an example, and it. Well, Madam Chair, the only thing I was gonna say is, um, for an example, and it kinda sounds like we're on number five almost. Or, you know, going along down the road.
Uh, no, I'm not at five yet, no, no.
Are you talking about this, this five?
I'm just about to get to five.
Or this five.
Okay, I'm ju- I'm just about to tran- to transition to that. Um, so, um, if you guys can think about other things, and what I'd like to do is try to put together. I don't wanna kill an ant with a cannon, but I would like to have a kind of a, a vision that we're all sharing. About how this board should be communicating with the public. Um, and, uh, and then work with Lisa and others to try to execute that plan. Um, we can do all the good work that we want to do, but if we're not telling people what's happening. Then they imagine the worst, or they think that we're not doing what we're supposed to be doing. Um, so, you know, I know that you guys are, are all gonna, you know, be laboring oars, and we're all gonna work together, so. Let's let people know about the hard work we're doing. Um, okay, with that, I will transition to speaking of, um, hard work that people are doing. Um, so, um, Mr. Hickey, um, I put on here the Silver Lake Regional School invitation. We received an invitation from, um, I believe her name is Patricia Hatch, the, um, the chair, um, of the Silver Lake. Um, Regional School District, um, to come and have more. I don't know how she exactly described it, but more solid conversations, more tangible conversations. About joining the Silver Lake Regional School System now. I know you had initially gone and spoken to them, um, and then circled back with us and let us know, and the prior board had said. You know, like, it's not gonna hurt to have a conversation, um, and, uh, you know, and I know that you had said, yeah, I probably should've come before, you know, I. Did it, but, uh, but it's done, and now I'm just kinda letting you know. Um, and I think you were kind of thinking of the connectivity to the deregionalization, um, committee. Now, the deregionalization committee, the, the, um, objective. Was to look at the cost of deregionalization, and that's a whole different topic for a whole different day. Of where the heck TMS is on that, and why we haven't gotten a final product, and all that, which I will, um, say, but did you. I, I guess the reason I had this on here is because if we don't have the final, um. Results of that TMS study on how much it's gonna cost to deregionalize, and therefore do not know what we're going to do. Does it make sense for us to be sitting down with the Silver Lake Regional School, um, Committee? I will defer to you guys, I feel, I can, I go back and forth on it, I, I say, well, we could still have the conversation. It doesn't, it doesn't, um, you know, it's not contractual, it's a conversation. Um, but then I think, is that wasting their time, is it wasting our time, because we really don't know what our next actions are, so with that, Mr. Hickey.
Um, Joe, where to stand up, I.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I was deferring to him just 'cause I wanted to.
No, I figured I could maybe answer your question, if you had a question, or if it was more of a comment, then I can go.
Uh, ki- kinda question comment, I guess, so, for me, it comes down to that I never think that there's a. There's, that there's anything wrong with ever having conversations, so the conversation's fine, as far as I'm concerned. The only thing that I, that, that I really have to be wary of is the Silver Lake's status. As it relates to our position as a town as well, so if we go from, from being with Whitman to being with, with Silver Lake.
We're still gonna be one of the wealthier towns.
We're, we're gonna be the wealthier town, so is it going, is it actually going to strengthen our position? And I don't know the answer to this, so I'm just, I'm literally just thinking out loud. Does it actually put us in a better position with that town versus another town that. Might be wealthier, so we could actually have the flip happen that, you know, that got us in this mess in the first place? So, is that the town to look at, and if the answer's yes, fantastic, absolutely, but regardless, I'm good with just having conversations in general.
So I think, I think that that's a valid question to ask, right, when we have the conversation. I think we know what the, we, we intuit what the answer is there, um, and I, and I, I don't know why, but I just am like, what? Why do we keep being called the wealthier town, I look around, and this is not what it feels like to me. But I guess I'm not the state, and I don't know what their little formula is for calculating that.
Right, to balance the budget, so what I did, um, you know, just to let Ed and Ian know. Um, was, and this all happened, you know, by accident. Um, and I contacted, uh, Dr. Prue, who is the superintendent of the Silver Lake. Uh, Regional School System, put me in touch with Paula Hatch, who is the chair of the school committee. Um, and Paula and I had one conversation, it was on a Monday night, before a Tuesday night meeting. Um, where I thought I could get it on the agenda, because there is a, a rule that if something happens within the last forty eight hours. You can present it at the meeting. That particular meeting went three and a half hours long, as Laura had mentioned, and I thought this was too important. To bring up at nine thirty at night. Um, so I waited till the following week, um, to get it on the agenda, there were. And I'm not throwing anybody under the bus, didn't get on the agenda. Um, but I had to bring it up that night, 'cause I had known the information for eight days, which is, you may not know now, you will find out possibly in the next three years. That that is an open meeting law violation, that I had information and didn't tell the board, regardless. My reasoning for doing this was, TMS has not given us an answer yet. Regardless of what we do, who we talk to, where we go, if we stay. Um, it's a four-year process to deregionalize. Whether it's Hanson on their own, or my idea, go to another district. Um, it's out there, um, on YouTube or whatever, I spoke at a school committee meeting. Um, back in April, um, about the, um, busing situation. Where the school committee wanted to put it into their operational budget. Which meant, at the time, Han- where this, where the busing is not on the operational budget. Whitman pays eighty percent, 'cause that's what they spend, Hanson spends, uh, is twenty percent, because that's what we spend. If it were to go onto the operational line, it becomes a sixty forty split. And I said it, and I'll say it again now, that I think some of the members of the school committee, which hopefully the chair, Laura, and the chair, Randy. With Chris, can fix this problem. I had said that some of the school committee members, I believe, have lost their way. And I believe that, because when you want Hanson to pay an extra twenty percent for non-mandatory busing. That says, and it got voted on a nine to one vote, by the way, that particular night. That I was just looking for other options for the town, and the children of this town and the students to be, of this town. To be taught, but not being gouged every year by Whitman. And I said that, so if you wanna look at it tonight, or look out on the YouTube for that meeting, that's it.
All right, so can we bring this back around, so?
So, my meeting with Paula, or my phone conversation with Paula.
Who was Paula?
Hatch, Paula Hatch, the school committee, um, Silver Lake.
Oh, Silver Lake, okay.
Was to give the town of Hanson another option. Um, TMS has spent a lot of time, and they will get us an answer, but that answer is gonna be boom, that lump sum. Whatever it's gonna be, it's gonna be Silver Lake, by talking to them, it's going to be boom, that lump sum. Just to compare the lump sums with what we have compared to how many votes we would have on the school committee. Um, you know. What the busing would be like, all those questions could be talked about, but not going into anything permanent. You know, how many members of the school committee are there, okay, well, how many will Hanson have?
Yep.
Well, how many does, you know, Halifax have, wha- whatever the situation, I almost said camera.
All right, so, so, he, so here's where we're at, the reason I put it on here is that I really want the board, um, to, there's two paths. Either we just stick with the deregionalization, wait till that's done and put a bow on it. And then if we decide that we wanna have a conversation with Silver Lake, we can have the conversation. Or we vote as a board to expand the, um, the role of the deregionalization committee. To include looking into the joining of Silver Lake.
Why would a deregionalization committee look into regionalizing? Well, that doesn't make any sense, sorry.
And I agree with that.
To me, this makes no sense at all, I don't understand why we're going to go look at that when we haven't finished this. And I have serious issues with this anyway, because of the way that formula was changed. Sorry, I, I, I personally feel on the school committee, I mean, the school issue, that that agreement needs to be revisited.
Okay, thank, well, it will be, it will be.
In an honest and fair way, and not because we're the richer town, that, that's infuriating, we're not the richer town.
Uh, well, you're not gonna give an argument for me on that.
We're just not.
To your point, Mrs. Rain, um, uh, in the conversation with Mr. Howard, when we were talking about a host of things. One of which was the Silver Lake thing, 'cause I was like, just in case you hear, and this was before it hit the newspaper. I said, just in case you hear, I wanna make sure that you're clear that I'm gonna put on my agenda, that we're gonna be talking about this, I don't want there to be any issue. I told Mr. Lamatina the same thing, um, and I, um, and I, I, he said, oh, well, one other thing I wanted to bring up. Was, uh, we would like to start talking about the regional agreement, and, and I said, well, we definitely would like to talk about that. And I know one, and, you know, so that's something we'll have to talk about, um, up the road, um, in terms of what are we looking for, how do we do that? Do, um, the last time we did the regional agreement, it was a nightmare for a variety of reasons. Um, not the least of which, it was like a twelve-member committee, and nothing good is gonna come from a twelve-member committee. You need to get people who are empowered, have a forum for people to feed that, those people who are empowered the information, and then move forward with the. And I said that to Chris, I said, with all due respect to Chris, I really hope this isn't gonna be a twelve-member committee. And he said, I agree, and so he's gonna talk to his guys, and Ray's gonna talk to those guys, and so I'm kinda talking to you guys. Um, so, let's, let's, as a preliminary matter, um, who would like us to have a discussion with Silver Lake?
I see nothing wrong with a conversation.
Okay, so, okay, and, and should, should we have, and I really hesitate to add another committee, or whatever. Um.
Two of us go, sit down and.
Okay, does somebody else want to work with Mr. Hickey to have the conversation with Silver Lake? Anybody jump?
Or I can go by myself.
No, I mean, I don't mind.
I do think it should be more than one person, 'cause I think you get a good, healthy balance of.
Right, while they're deciding, since they both voted yes, I wanna make it clear to Ian. That the deregionalization feasibility committee had nothing to do with this, this was me.
I didn't think so.
Right, this was me on my own, trying to think outside the box, I will also tell you that I did not keep this information to myself.
Oh, no, I know, but it blew up on social media on me.
Um, I did speak to one other, um, person, uh, one other select board member. So they knew within twenty-four or twenty-six hours of me having this conversation. But couldn't talk to more than one, because I knew that was an open meeting law violation. Um, and.
And you weren't, I don't, I think we talked about this before, you weren't even doing it as a, a select board representative. You were doing it as Jim Hickey, a citizen.
And I made a point to tell everyone I spoke to along the way.
Yeah.
My title, but I'm doing this just as a citizen, because maybe somebody else thought of it and didn't do it.
And I hear what you're saying, Jim, but I think one of the things we have to keep in mind is that no matter how many disclaimers we put out there. If you're contacting somebody in what appears to be an official capacity, they're going to assume you're contacting them in an official capacity. And I'm sure that you had no ill intention or anything else, so, um, Joe, were you saying you would be willing to be that person with Jim, or?
I'm willing to help out in any way, at all, that's fine by me, I just.
My, my only concern before we go too far is, is I'd like to understand Ian's. I, I just, I, my idea is I like to have more options on the table.
From a frying pan into the fire, talking to two different regions, why? Would, with the, 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 I had, the, it was brought up that a deregional, and I can't even talk. Deregionalization committee was formed to deregionalize.
Right.
That doesn't mean find another region, that means deregionalize. I have severe reservations about dissolving Whitman-Hanson, given the amount of money and time and. Everything that's gone into having the school system, I mean, we've got the two schools and, I don't know, I, I have no idea if Whitman has new schools out of this or not.
Uh, no, but they're about to build a new school, but, but you're right, the detanglement, the decoupling is gonna be costly, but that's what we. But we don't know how costly, 'cause TMS hasn't finished the study yet, so, um, it's all high, it's all, it's all a hypothesis. Yeah, it's all hypothesis until we get the numbers from TMS. I, I don't have a problem with you guys having a conversation, but logically, in my mind. It does not make sense for me, until we put a bow on the cost for de- like, until we know whether we're gonna deregionalize. Why even waste our time or their time talking about joining them, because if we know, if we don't know whether we're gonna be deregonalizing, and, and I think. It's my fervent hope that we don't deregonalize, but that we find a way to, um, improve the relationship and. And effectuate something more positive for Hanson. Um, but I'm just one gal, I'm just one vote, I don't know, you know, I, I, I don't, I don't have a violent reaction to you talking to them, but I just wonder, is that the best use of our time? And their time?
But, so, that's my point on it, this is why I'm, I'm kind of, I'm, I'm, I'm willing to help, it's fine, but I. I, I re- it's a, it's a conversation, so I'm, I'm personally fine with Jim talking to anybody, could be Hanover, could be. Springfield, I, I don't care who it is, because it's a conversation. I don't mind helping, if the board wants me to help out, I'll, I'll help out, for sure, but this, Jim's more than capable of doing this.
They're, I don't wanna say they're, they're upping the ante a little bit, but they, they want to have representatives from each of the towns.
But that's, but that's the part where I was getting to, is that if I, if, if you formalize it, and now it's Jim and I going there and doing this. Does it make it appear more formal, and it's an actual negotiation versus a conversation? Because there's too many, like, I'm, I'm fine with having the conversation, anybody, anybody that wants to talk with us. About regionalizing, having a better deal, whatever it is that's going on, including Whitman. Is more than welcome to come to the table, because the only concern I have is making sure that, that. My grandparents don't tax themselves out of the town, my kids have a good education, and people wanna move here, because it's a pleasant town to live in. I don't care who wants to partner with us to make that happen. It's, we have to make sure that the, that, that the elderly are taken care of, the kids are taken care of, and everybody in between us as well, so. Whoever gives us the best deal wins.
Okay.
That's what it is.
So, here, so here's, here, again, this is just a suggestion, um, they're looking for something July twenty-sixth. I'm wondering if we could just say to them, we're not quite to the point where we can have that additional conversation. Um, we've got a little preliminary footwork we need to do, and then I think we need to push on TMS.
Yeah.
And get them to give us a firm date.
Yeah.
And then if, and, did you have that already?
I just think we need to walk them.
Okay, and, and then once we ha- once we have that information, and we're able to get the presentation from TMS, then we can always say. Can we talk to you in September, can we, if, if that's what the board wants to do.
Because it's gonna take so long to, for this process, no matter, the only thing that's not gonna take so long, and it could take as long. Is if we stay with Whitman, but under a new agreement. Because the old agreement's not working.
The old agreement is.
The old, it's obsolete, it's not even, it's not even accurate.
It's not, it's not representative of the, of the, of the town in general, it's just, it's a, it's a, yeah, it's a bad agreement, we all agree on that.
Ms. Green, I think, did you have a, a date that you might be able to?
Well, I, I have an update, um, so, I did receive from TMS, I reached out to them to get an update. Um, and they say that they should have something to us by Monday or Tuesday of next week. Um, and they asked if we have a, um, meeting in mind that they wanna put us on, so. Do you want me to put them on for June twenty-eighth, would you like me to put them on maybe for the first meeting in July? I'm happy to do that and reach out.
Lucy, she's, she's already been warning me about the next two agendas, uh, she keeps going, you can't add anything else to the agenda.
Look at what we've got left here.
So, these are quick, those, these are, these are.
Which would segue me into asking the board. Um, do you want the, uh, deregionalization feasibility committee to look at this report before the board gets it?
I think that's the right thing to do, that's what, I don't want people to feel as though they're not empowered to do the job we asked them to do, yeah. Um, so I think that's the right thing to do, so why don't we, um, see what Jim comes up with for scheduling, getting those guys together. And then as soon as they've had ability to have a conversation, then we'll pop them on our agenda. And in the meantime, if we can just kind of pump the brakes a little bit, and let the Silver Lake folks know, um. We'll, we'll be in touch, uh, but right now, we've got a new board, we have a lot of things that we're working through. Um, and, and the timing just isn't right for us to have a deeper conversation right now, do you guys agree with that? Okay, all right, so, um. Uh, I already kind of went over the select board committee reports, the fact that I just would like to have us have those conversations. Select board committee appointments, um, we don't have to do this tonight, but I do want you guys to think about, um, the, two things. Committees and liaisons, um, traditionally, this board. Traditionally, this board has not had a liaison for each of the pertinent departments, but I've been looking around at some of the other towns, and they do have liaisons, and I like the idea of it because it gives the, um, department head, um, somebody else aside from Lisa that they can talk to, who's gonna advocate for them, and when it comes to budget time, um, you know, like Jim was able to advocate for Mary Collins, um, you know, at, at, um, the meeting, cause he had been to the senior section and he knew. Um, and similarly, you know, Joe for recreation, so, um, so the depart, you know, the, the, um, groups that I'm thinking that we need to have a liaison, and again, think about this, and the ne, next meeting, we, you guys can chime in with what, you know, really speaks to you, um, is, um, fire, police, obviously, highway, um, senior, library, um, and finance. And, and I thought, I thought those were the main ones. Is there anybody else that we should have?
Capes.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, no, after you, after you.
You're saying capes.
Parks and Fields.
Capes and Fields?
Capes and improvement.
Now, do we want a liaison to the school district? I will tell you, one of the things that I feel that we got caught flat-footed on in the last, um, in the last, uh, budget cycle, was Whitman was sending their guys to the, to the, um, to the school committee meetings, to the, to the, all of the budget meetings.
Yep.
They were very involved in all of those budget meetings. We were not. We were not sending anybody. I mean, we might, you and I had gone to a couple of them, but I mean, it wasn't like a formalized thing. Um, again, we, we don't have to decide this tonight, but I want you guys to think about it, because I think that, um, as much as we're gonna expect people to come and keep us updated, we also have to engage, and we have to meet people where they are and, and have those conversations. Mr. Weeks?
I just wanna add something really quick. When it comes to liaisons, cause this is my experience, the, the, my first year being a liaison, is, there's a lot of, um, uh, vagueness to what the responsibilities of a liaison is. And for me, my liaison style was, if you needed me to be somewhere, you need to communicate something, let me know, I'd be there and do all that, versus being borderline a member of a committee. And so, what I'd like us to think about as we start doing these things, is maybe determine what it is that we're expecting a liaison to do. Yeah, and what the committee should expect of us to be able to do. Cause I, I'm really adamant against not getting involved in an appointed or an elected committee doing their job. My job is to communicate to this board what has been done and vice versa, not to put my stuff on them and expect them to have me answer questions for them. I, I'd like them working it out, that's why we do it. But if that's not the way it's supposed to be...
No, that, it, we are, it is not, it is not our intention to have somebody supervising police, fire, highway. That is Lisa's, Lisa, they report to, you know, Lisa is the one who oversees that stuff. It is not our intention to be an adjunct member of a committee or a commission. No. We're not doing this to micromanage. We're doing it to be helpful and supportive. So, it's really, what do you need from us? We will advocate for that, uh, with the board. We'll have a conversation with you about, you know, with the board. Maybe we'll bring information you might need to know from the board to you, but it is not to overstep in any way, and I, I thank you for saying that, because I know we have had some little issues around that. We won't get into that, but... Um, okay, so, just think about the, um, committee appointments, um, the liaison. Now, committee appointments, we've got, um, the deregionalization, which really wouldn't make sense at this point in the game to have anybody else. Um, we've got, um, Plymouth County Hospital, which they, um, I was contacted by, um, Ms. Macio, who asked, um, it, that the board is anxious that Mr., um, Dyer is no longer a member. Um, the energy committee, um, also has another vacancy left by, um, you know, uh, Mr. Dyer. Uh, the highway feasibility committee, which we committed at the last, um, at the last town meeting to put a bow on that, um, we're just gonna have to get a whole bunch of ribbon to be putting, putting bows on everything left and right. Uh, but we're gonna, um, we, we need to bring that home. And again, figure out, is light control a good building for highway? If it isn't, as Matt has said multiple times, and it makes me feel better that we've spent this money, that plan can be taken and applied to another building, cause it's a, it's what their needs are. It's a needs assessment. Um, so, we, we need somebody to oversee that. Um, I, I've been on the McQuan reuse. We're gonna be tearing that building down, um, and then we've got a whole host of discussions that have to happen. Um, I'm on economic development. We're really starting to get traction on that, so I'm really hoping to stay on it. Um, and we could even discuss, if people have a particular passion, we could have more than one select person on, on a, you know, committee. That's, it's not be on the pale. Um, trying to think, are any other committees that I'm missing that, um, we need to have? Tonight, I'm hoping that I can get a volunteer for the energy committee and the, um, Plymouth County Hospital, because those two committees are, are actively meeting, and they need somebody to replace Matt, who was the, who was the person.
I wouldn't mind being involved with the hospital one, I guess.
Which one?
The hospital.
I'll do the other. I'll do the energy.
Um, okay, and any other discussion?
Yeah, I was gonna jump on the, um, Plymouth County Hospital. So, a couple of the members lobbying me, lobbying me.
If, if you're, if you know more about it, go for it.
No, 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 I think, uh...
I'm just interested in it because we squat in that nurses' building.
Yeah, you know what, um, my, I'm thinking, um, and we're kinda similarly positioned in this, because I'm on the board of the food pantry, and I know you're doing the Plymouth County Beekeepers, and so, we're both in that building, and so, I think we probably have to not be part of the conversations about what's happening at that property, just to avoid, and even though, I, I know you're not financially benefiting, I sure as heck am not from the food pantry, but just to make sure there's no, like, oh, they're trying to influence or anything, um, just my two cents worth on that.
That's fine.
You know, um, but...
To that point, though, I don't, I mean, I don't have, A, I don't have to be on it. If, if, if Ann really wants to be on it, it's totally fine. But also, I mean, we, like you just, didn't you just say we could have multiple people on it? I don't think that there's a conflict of interest for that, and quite frankly, I'm on so many committees, it's hard to even... Cause I haven't even gotten a chance to get into the capital improvement committee needs, that we're gonna have to solve this problem. We're talking about October already. So, um, we have, we have lots of things, so I'm, I'm more than willing to share the wealth. I mean, Jim's, I can't tell you how many times Jim and Laura have jumped into rec, rec committee meetings for me, so it's not like...
The only thing I would say is, and you can very quickly do this, um, just, and, and I think it would be great if you wanna do it, um, is just, um, reach out to the lawyer of the day at the state ethics. Tell them what your situation is. You're a nonprofit, you don't make any money, you're really gonna be talking about the rest of the property, not that building. And they'll quickly say, just don't talk about any vote that includes the building.
Right. Lawyer of the day.
Yeah, it's called lawyer of the day, state ethics.
Yeah.
They're very responsive.
It really is like a quick phone call. They'll call you back in a couple minutes.
Yeah, I'll send you a little link.
Yeah, send me a little link, okay.
Yeah, um, okay, so, uh, so, um, did...
I was, the only reason why I'm so passionate about the Plymouth County one is cause a couple of members reached out to me specifically. So, you just kinda beat me to the punch on, on that, but other than that, I mean, I, it, it doesn't matter.
All right, well, we're meeting next week, so I feel like between then and, 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 um, you know, and now, Ann can have an opportunity, and, you know, and if you guys wanna talk between yourselves and figure out, um, cause I know we wanna engage, Ann, and, and certainly, as new members, we wanna get them in there, and, and I know you're saying you're a little oversubscribed right now, maybe with some of the committees and stuff.
Oh, it's, it's probably gonna get even worse. So, I, I mean, I don't mind you being the liaison, I just, they asked me to jump on, so if they're willing to take on a second person, just on the, on the periphery, I'm, I'm more than willing to help out.
Okay, all right, okay.
It doesn't matter.
So, does that sound like a plan to just check in and let us know?
Whatever we need.
Have your people call our people, okay.
Send me a link.
All right, I will.
And it's done. It's in, it's in your...
So, I'll be on it, then Laura, I'll do Parks and Fields.
You'll be a liaison for Parks and Fields?
Yeah, Adam, um, has reached out to me already, so...
So, we're talking about being a liaison or we're talking about being a committee?
Well, no, we weren't talking about that. We were talking about the, the two openings we have tonight, and then next week, we're gonna talk about liaisons. But it's okay. Jim wanted to mention the, the Parks and Fields, so we'll just put that down there.
Yeah.
Um, okay, now, let's see, where are we? Um, select board committee reports, I already discussed that. Oh, did I have a volunteer for energy committee? I believe you, I saw you.
Yes.
Okay, um, does anybody have any issue with Ed being the energy committee person?
Oh, I don't know much energy.
It's a, it's a, you know, it's a great group of people, and, um, it's kinda interesting. Uh, yeah, yeah, they do, and they're actually getting grants, and they're doing good work, so I think you'll enjoy it. It'll be good learning experience.
I, I was looking at the upside. I, I, it's very interesting. Thank you.
Good, cool, thanks. Thank you guys for stepping up. I appreciate that. Um, and then, not that we need an immediate appointment, but does anybody have a particular yearning to, um, take the highway feasibility, um, committee?
What is the highway feasibility?
Well, so that's the, so we got money to do an engineering study about what does the highway department need versus what they have now.
Oh, okay, right, right, right.
And then, would light control be a feasible place for them to do that? And, and according to Kenny, the last update we got was, we had roughly a bit, um, budget of, I think it was four hundred and fifty thousand, and three hundred and fifty thousand of which has been spent, but we don't have a final plan. So, would really, um, be, um, resuscitating that committee, because I, from what I understand, a member's died, a member's moved, and... Anyway, it basically was Kenny and Jamison and one hearty soul, um, I think maybe John Murray or somebody. Um, and so, we'd have to recruit more members, um, would have to meet with, um, with, uh, the engineering firm, figure out where they're at, and then drive it home to get some kind of a, a closure on that.
Cause I have, I, I did have some pretty strong thoughts on that one, too.
Okay, I mean, um, about the feasibility?
Yeah, about what they should do, cause I mean, the highway department needs...
They need a, they need a place.
It looks like Sanford and Son's junkyard up there. It's awful.
So, the question for this is, is that the right place for them?
Right, no, I know.
Nobody disputes they need.
Well, I've heard some interesting thoughts on the McQuan, um, Fields and, and taking that whole thing, and...
Yeah.
I mean, that sounds plausible.
So, I think if you, if the high...
I do have a thing about that. That's, I have more of a thing about that than I do about the hospital to tell you.
All right, well, you know what, then why don't you do the highway?
Why don't I do the highway, yes.
And if you feel that passion driving you.
Yeah, I do, I do.
And then, if you want the Plymouth County Hospital, which I, I think I could see you doing that, and, um, that would be great, and I know that you know, you know, like, some of the members and, you know, you, you know...
Yeah, either way is fine with me. Honestly, I, I, I'd like to be able to help them out, but honestly, that, I don't have the bandwidth for that. Like, if you, if you're passionate about that and you know how to do it, absolutely.
We've got, good, good, this is great, cause these are the three openings that we have, and this kind of spreads the wealth, and, um, I think it's gonna be a lot of heavy lifting, um, Ann, but, um, you know, our office will help you. Kenny, I'm sure will give you the information. He's got, and obviously, Jamison has got a vested interest in this. We do have to get them a better home. The question is where?
Mm-hmm.
So, um, all right, that's awesome. Um, and...
Ma'am, Ms. Chair?
Yes.
May I just confirm? Um, so we have, um, Mr. Heel is gonna be on energy committee, um, and then Ms. Rain is gonna be highway feasibility committee. Um, Mr. Weeks, Vice Chair Weeks, will be Plymouth County Hospital.
Yes.
Um, Parks and Field's gonna be Mr. Hickey, McQuan reuse is yourself, EDC is yourself, economic development committee. And how about recreation? Did somebody, um, is someone liaison to recreation? Did you mention that and I missed it?
You want me to, if you wanna give it up, I'll take it.
Recreation?
Yeah, liaison.
Can we do the, can we do like a two-person thing?
I'll tell you what, I'll take recreation, you take drainage.
What?
That sounds like a short, a short straw.
I know.
And never me.
We could talk, you know what, we'll talk about the, the other, okay, I just wanna make sure you missed something, okay. So, with that, uh, we'll entertain a motion for those committees and liaison positions. Did anybody wanna, um...
Some would.
Okay, anybody wanna second that motion?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. All right, I'm trying to move this along here. Um, select board committee reports, I already discussed that, um, so now that we're all on committees, we're gonna keep each other up to date. Did you want...
You wanted me to give one? I have one, just for an example.
Well, this was just conceptual. This was just conceptual for tonight.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can you possibly wait till next week?
No, next week will be too late.
Okay, well, then please give us the update.
Council on Aging, very quickly. Uh, they had a meeting, um, last week, and the position for the outreach coordinator will be discussed tomorrow. Uh, Mary and Lisa are gonna discuss that tomorrow. That's what I have for an update.
That's great, that's awesome. Thank you.
That's how quick they are.
All right, incident camp, we already discussed. I already discussed select board offices, so, um, public records request and fee discussion. Uh, Ms. Green, uh, I shouldn't even just say Ms. Green, but in general, town hall has had, um, some, uh, patterns where people are requesting, requesting information under the Freedom of Information Act, which is fantastic. We're all about people requesting information. That's great. Uh, it requires work on the part of our employees, and at times, we've had people request voluminous amounts of, um, information to never pick it up or pay us for it. Um, so, Ms. Green, I'm queuing that up to you for further discussion.
So, um, yeah, so our office, not just our office, but many of our office departments are, um, sometimes overwhelmed with our records requests, because, um, people usually will request a, you know, certain records for a period of time. That can be a year's worth of records. So, this takes time to research, compile, um, redact if necessary, and we have to put the law, the, the exception law, for the redaction, um, on it, and it, it takes a lot of work. The law basically does allow the open, um, public records law allows for fees to be charged, reasonable fees. And how the law is worded is that, um, they, they basically break it down to, um, like, agencies, municipalities, cities, things like that. And where Hanson falls in is, we are a municipality with a population of under twenty thousand. Um, so, for us, under the law, we can basically charge up to twenty-five dollars an hour for the cost of compiling this, this records request. It's easy to do it that way, rather than, or you can, you can charge the lowest hourly paid employee in that particular department, which most of our employees, because of longevity, are, are more than twenty-five dollars an hour. Um, and then also...
It's like a burden of proof that people can ask for you to prove that that's your lowest...
Yeah, so you, you need to be very specific of the ti, the amount of time that person has, has, you know, put towards, um, compiling this records request, and, you know, put together like an invoice. I created a fillable invoice that departments can fill out. Um, and then you, it's also, you get five cents per copy, um, that, so, anything we print out or copy, it's five cents. Um, so the question is now, the, again, records requests take a lot of time, and it depends on what they're looking for. So, you know, if they're looking for certain emails that surround a particular topic, uh, for, since from February of last year to right now, you've gotta go back over a year and search those emails. If they're looking for text messages, you have to literally take the phone, do a snapshot, take that, and email it to yourself. But your snapshot is only this big, so if you've got somebody looking for texts or communications for six months' worth, that's thirty emails, you know, thirty snapshots, thirty emails, and then again, you have to categorize it. And, and again, depending on pe, people looking for redaction, which means you have to look through the whole document and redact the information and, and add the law in that, you know, this information is redacted under Mass General Law, chapter four, section, whatever the section for the exception is.
So, Lisa, the reason I had asked, that I had put this on the agenda was, Lisa let me know that, that this is quite time-consuming. We have historically been charging twenty-five dollars per request. Not per hour, per request. Um, so if you ask for something that's just two documents, that's twenty-five dollars. If you ask for something that takes us seven days, it's twenty-five dollars.
So, my question is, uh, through you, what are other towns doing?
So, we did, we did look at that, um, and most of them are charging the per hour.
Well, then that makes the most amount of sense.
Yeah, and so, but I, I didn't want to, we didn't wanna unilaterally make that decision. I wanted to bring it before the board. Um, we're certainly not in a, um, you know, a, a position where we've got unlimited resources and unlimited money. Um, and I, I, as, as much as I support people, people's access to records, and, you know, it's wonderful thing that we've got the transparency, um, there are cases where it's being done purely out of retribution, uh, people that don't even show up sometimes to pick up the stuff after she's spending days, so... Um, anyway, Mr. Hickey?
Uh, Madam Chair, you just said it, that, you know, we, we could charge the twenty-five dollars and do all the work, and then they don't show up. Why can't we charge before we do the work?
You did look into this, Lisa, didn't you? There's a, so I had asked...
Because if you, yeah, if you have something, Laura, it's gonna take five days to do, in, you know, five hours or ten hours, um, it's two hundred and fifty dollars plus the copies. Um, we'll start that when you bring up the, the check.
Is that permitted, Lisa?
Yes. I'm gonna reach out to town council to get the, the answer to that.
Repay, or, or half, or a deposit.
Right, yeah.
Some type of deposit.
Yeah, cause the law actually, um, I have been scouring this law, and it, it is actually silent on exactly if we can take a deposit... and it it is actually silent on exactly if we can take a deposit or can we charge the whole thing or, you know, have the, it's a little bit silent on exactly what process we can do as far as charging people in advance. So I'll reach out to Town Council and have the answer to that.
All right, so I will entertain a motion for Lisa to, and in general, for the, for Town Hall, for any in-town employee who's a records officer for their respective departments, to be charging twenty-five dollars per hour. And to the extent we're able to have people prepay it, if legal counsel agrees, to have people do that. I will entertain that motion.
So moved.
Second.
With stipulation, I just don't want to lose out on the five cents per copy.
And five cents per copy.
As well as five cents per copy.
Yeah. Just put that in the motion.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. And ratified fire contract, paternity and maternity leave. Ms. Green?
So this evening, some of our new board members, we went through negotiations last year with all of our unions, and we were able to come to agreements with all the unions. It's taken a little bit to get the ratified contracts back. And fire, we just received the ratified fire contract back that includes all the terms that was agreed upon. And I can go through some of the the basic terms just to, just to give folks an idea of what the firefighters came to an agreement with. And the holidays, basically, all the unions have the same holidays, including Juneteenth now, which is federal and state holiday. They're, basically, they're wages. And hold on, I'm just getting to that point, that part. All right, so basically, they are going to receive the first year of the contract a two percent increase. Second year of the contract, they get two point two five increase. Third year, they will receive two point two five increase. That is the COLA stipulations. They also will receive, based on their longevity in the position, whether they're a paramedic, firefighter, lieutenant, deputy chief, they will get an additional two percent based on how many years of service that they give and what it, what title that they hold.
Can I just, but I just keep a one minute on this? Just for the, for Ian and Ed. One of the, one of the things that we did with this this contract negotiation that was different than we've done in the past is what we heard from both chiefs is retention of people is very difficult, particularly in this market. And so what we really tried to do was bake in an incentive for people to stay. The people we've already invested in, who are already doing a good job, to stay with us so that we're not becoming a McDonald's of fire and police where people are going off and marking someone else.
Turning them here and then having to move on.
Exactly.
Thanks, Lisa.
Yeah, so that's what this contract includes, as well as, so you'll see in the back of the contract is the tables with all the increases. And then just, you know, basically, things like their clothing allowance, personal days, vacation days, those are all standard in the contract. But the main thing were the COLAs and the additional percentages for their longevity, how many years, and then what position they hold.
Compared to other contracts with with the fire, are there a lot of, a lot of differences? And then the same question as far as comparing to the police? Are there the same increases and similar, are they similar?
They're different. Because police, police, they base a lot of theirs on education. Fire is is based on whether they hold paramedic license or just a firefighter. So they receive stipends for those positions based on what they hold. So it's different in that aspect.
I mean, I mean more like the two point two five percent, year over year.
Yes, they were very similar, yes. Yes, the COLAs were very similar.
You mentioned the holidays are the same, but I'm assuming holidays for fire and police aren't, okay, you guys all have Christmas off, you know.
Well, no, if they don't take that day off, then they get a holiday that they're able to take at their leisure. But what what you'll find is that the unions all know what the other unions are getting, and they compare notes, and so they are very similar.
Good, okay, thank you.
Yes, yes. And actually, the police is the last contract that we're waiting on for the ratified. It's it, it's close, it's very close. So once we do get that, we will have all of our union contracts ratified, you know, before it's ended already, and they will all be up on our website, which has not happened before, so.
Got it, Ron, since I've been on the board.
That's a monumental.
It's huge.
Yeah.
Okay, so did you need a motion to ratify?
Yes.
So moved. Second.
All in favor? All right, great.
We have the contract here for everybody's signatures.
Fantastic. Now we're moving on to one-day licenses. I will entertain a motion to approve all the one-day licenses as listed in our agenda.
So moved. Second.
All in favor? Okay, now we're moving on to appointments. Appoint Jill Tully as a temporary minutes clerk to the Planning Board and Economic Development Committee until administrative assistance to the planning board is hired. I will entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
All in favor? We already took care of Mr. Howard. And I will entertain a motion to approve open session minutes for March twenty-ninth, April twelfth, and April fourteenth.
All right, so I will make a motion for, we can't do it all at once because there's one where we don't have necessarily a forum. So I just want to make sure you guys are all set.
Why, is there one you weren't there?
Yeah, it was the emergency meeting.
The emergency.
Okay.
So March twenty-ninth, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as printed.
Mr. Hickey?
Aye, second it.
Okay, all in favor? Okay.
April twelfth, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as printed.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
And then, I don't think there's.
A question on that. Can we vote on the minutes?
If you read the minutes and you watch the meeting, you can definitely vote on them. You don't have to be present to have voted on them. Sometimes people recuse themselves because they say, you know what, I wasn't there, I just don't feel comfortable. It's really up to you.
And that actually answers my third, my, the question for this, because I think technically, yes, you can vote on these so that'll allow us to.
Accept them.
Accept them, yes. But because I wasn't there, I just don't want to make the motion in the second.
I'll make the motion on the special meeting of April fourteenth. Be accepted.
I got April twelve.
I, I'm not, am I allowed to second it?
Oh, yeah, you can make motions on your own stuff, too.
Well, I will second it because I think we're down to that anyways.
Yeah.
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And I'll abstain.
All right, and Town Administrator would report. Not to put too much pressure, Lisa, but it's between you and us getting out of here.
I'll make it quick. Don't let me forget to notarize that order. All right, so we we had this at the beginning in the announcements. Just reminder, Town Hall will be closed on Monday, June twentieth. I also would just like to announce, too, that the transfer station will also be closed on Monday, June twentieth. It will be open Sunday, it's normal hours, and then reopen again on Tuesday, normal hours. Just to to get that information out there. And I just, I'm happy to report with Grants, Tony DeFrayis, our town planner, successfully completed five applications for the Massachusetts, the One Stop Grant Program, and successfully submitted all of those five applications. That's huge, thirty-nine-page-long applications. I'd like to really recognize Tim White, our Veterans Agent, for the phenomenal work he did on the Hanson Memorial Day Parade. It was, it was a lot of his blood, sweat, and tears working on that. It was really heartwarming tribute. I I feel really honored that I was invited to, you know, bring some cars in and join in the parade. It was people, it was great seeing all the people out there. So bravo to Tim. The town is really, we're an asset to have him as our Veterans Agent. It's one of, we had a meeting with Patrick Roach, who is with Good Energy, who is assisting the town with the Hanson Municipal Aggregate Plan, with the attorney with Good Energy and with the D O E R attorney, just to go over the formalities of the documents and the process for Hanson to enter into the aggregate plan. They were going, the attorney for D O E R was satisfied with the information that was provided and is going to do a letter of, that is acceptable, that the town is reviewing and going through this process in good faith. So we were able to to get that done. I also had a meeting with Green Communities, speaking of energy committee, with Wendy, and I'm sorry, her last name, Simmons of Prism Energy, and Kristin Gill, who is a, an engineer on her staff. And we talked about some possible projects that we'll look into in the fall. We successfully finished our final report and submitted it to the Energy Commission for the State of Massachusetts that handles Green Communities. So that leaves us eligible to apply in the fall. We're gonna be meeting with them again in July. We're gonna really focus on Town Hall and Library in the heating and cooling systems of the two buildings because they're ancient. And so we're gonna really focus on those because they're desperately needed. They are a lot of money, and we can apply up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in Green Communities funds. So we're gonna focus in on that. And anyone who wants to join us is certainly will to join us. Update on seven fifty-one Main Street, just to give an update on that. We are in the process of foreclosing on that property. It's with the courts right now. So we're waiting on a judgment from the court to award the town ownership for that property. Once that happens, that will start the clock ticking for one year for any owners or heirs of that property to cure the taxes. So meaning they have to pay any taxes.
So seven fifty-one is the property right at the corner of Crocker Place. You've seen with the X's.
The blue house that, yeah, so that's the Mangano, I'm sorry. The last name escapes me, but the old gas station.
Yes.
So once the court issues judgment in favor of the town, there's a one-year cure period for any of the heirs of the property to come forward and cure the the taxes. Once that year runs and no one has come forward, the town is free to do whatever we'd like, you know, auction off and things. I've also been working to apply for, once the town is awarded ownership, we can apply for a grant to have a environmental study done by an LSP because we will now own it. We don't have any liability towards this for doing this investigation. It just lets us know what's still in the ground. And that's done by a grant. Once we determine what's in the ground, we can apply for a grant to clean it up. So all good things happening with that property. But it takes time, it is being worked on. And last but not least, I have been working for over the, quite a few long months with putting together some insurance quotes. We've been working with a local company for a very long time, insurance agent for a long time. It's always best practice to to go out for bids and quotes and see what's out there. I have been working with Maya, who works with municipalities for insurance. They have given us a quote that looks like, based on what we paid for our insurance premiums last year, on our property insurance, commercial general insurance, auto insurance, workers' comp, boiler and machinery, and professional liability, it looks like they're gonna save us significant, almost seventy-eight, seventy-nine thousand dollars on top, you know, from what we have. We haven't received the other companies' quotes yet. But right now, Maya offers a lot of benefits to a municipality that include grants, free training. When you do these trainings, and they're all towards risk management, how to prevent it, things like that. When you do these trainings, you get credits that you can apply towards your future premiums.